Okay, it is eight o'clock. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Everyone complete stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I know we've got a lot of public here, but imagine most of this is for one agenda item. Any other public comment? Yes, Morris.
I would like some answers from the board of supervisors concerning the litigation that's going on with your lawyer for Drain Four lateral two.
And what information would you like in particular?
Anything you have. I've not received anything.
Okay.
That's pertinent to the situation.
Okay, we will get to something. Thanks, Morris. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda and minutes. Motion by Haas, second by Garmin. Any discussion on the agenda or minutes from August nineteenth? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Is Kyle online? Is he voting or no?
Kyle, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, did you vote or are you voting?
Yeah, aye for that.
Okay. Okay, all ayes. Then we have discussion, decision, negotiate tax interest on county held tax sale certificate. Is Nick in here?
He was coming.
Coming. Is there a Faith Senobio here? Morning, Nick.
Morning.
We're up to the tax sale.
Oh, okay.
Or tax interest, I mean, tax.
Yeah. I don't know if my people are here or not.
Faith Senobio?
Yeah, I don't think she's here.
Is this something we need to come back to?
Maybe, because they wanna talk.
Okay.
So, yeah, it might be something to come back to.
Okay, we will.
Please.
Yep, we will skip over that for now then.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Uh, Phil, monthly update from EMS director.
Morning.
Good morning.
Um, can I go over a few things briefly? Uh, transfer report, uh, June, we had twenty-six transfers. We took out of the hospital in July by twenty-two. Uh, we had been running around that. March was ten, April was eighteen, May was fifteen, so. Numbers are back up a little bit on that again. Things are starting to open up a little bit. Year to date, fiscal year end, uh, to date, we ran one thousand four hundred and twenty calls. Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, we ran one thousand three hundred forty-nine. So, about seventy calls from last year. Uh, still remain with our nine full-time staff. All possible, looking at any one down the road here. Things are running smooth as far as staffing goes. No issues there. Everybody's back full-time. Had rapid notification season, so that'll be a blessing when that's over. Um, public safety night out will be September eleventh. Uh, that'll be at Fairgrounds again. Uh, still in process of planning that. And then last week, we did a mock drill here in the county, um, between law enforcement and the hospital, fire department and EMS. And about seventy-five participants in that. We held that up by the college, county shed, college area. Uh, went very well, very well. We stepped through training. Uh, vehicles, our twenty twenty-two ambulance that we had the deer hit with, we have that fully replaced now. We did replace the OEM bumper with an actual deer guard bumper. So, took the money they gave us for the bumper and put that towards the deer guard. Our twenty twenty-four ambulance, we're also gonna be adding the deer guard bumper to that one. Our two thousand and twelve ambulance was involved in an accident up in Soy City. That vehicle's been repaired, so it's drivable. Uh, cosmetic damage has not been repaired. We're waiting on parts for that from, uh, from the manufacturer to get that fully repaired. But it is in use, it is being driven. Just had some cosmetic damage on that. Uh, facility update, AC repaired, been fully replaced and everything functional there, so now that it's cooled off. Uh, we did have our EMS advisory council meeting on the nineteenth, the last Tuesday. We meet quarterly. We did review, um, our current budget, FY twenty-six budget. Probably a couple months in, but there's nothing unusual there. Uh, we did go over our Medicare add-on rate, which is our G E M T program. That's that grant program from Medicaid. Uh, our fiscal year twenty twenty-six add-on rate is one thousand three hundred and seven dollars and fifty-three cents. Uh, what that means is that's what our cost of doing businesses per call is, one thousand three hundred and seven dollars fifty-three cents. So, we get that reimbursed to us back, less what Medicaid already paid us, so. It's a very good program. We get about a hundred thousand dollars out of that grant program at the end of the year, so. It's a lot, lot of involvement getting that completed. I started working on the FY twenty-seven GMT grants. We're in the process of using twenty twenty-five's data to do twenty twenty-seven's grant. So, we're wrapping, we're working on getting those numbers all wrapped up now. We did review, um, rag, bribe, and abate, how that went through the county. Uh, our rebate cost of doing business for just staffing was three thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars. We're meeting with rebate in September for our conversation earlier, so we'll see where it comes of that when we meet with them. From our one full-time member that we did approve the, the training agreement with as began, permanent class. So, she's in, in that now. Uh, we did review purch, future purchases, and we're gonna present some bids at our November advisory council meeting on some equipment replacement. Uh, we did review reports. Signings is up at both locations, so we do have the Kasuth County EMS sign above the hospital doors. I didn't bring a photo, but it looks kinda like our county buildings. It looks really good. So, that's completed. We, then the last thing we went over was our FY twenty twenty-five, um, year-end financials. I do not have full reports yet from our billing company. So, for our November advisory council meeting, I'll present a full year-end budget. And then that will come back to you guys for review and public comment. But kind of a quick breakdown, our, our projected revenue was two thou, two million, twelve dol, twelve thousand. Our actual received was two million, one oh one, four fifty-three, so we had about ninety thousand above projected. And our expenses, we projected our expenses at two million, twelve thousand. And our year-end to date was about one point seven million, so we're about three hundred thousand under, um, budget on our expenditures. But of the three hundred thousand left, we had a hundred and fifty thousand that was planned to be held over for future vehicle replacements, so. But finances look very good, but I'll have a full report on those after the November advisory council meeting. I don't have anything unless anybody has questions.
Anybody have questions or? Okay, thanks, Phil.
Have a great day.
Yeah, you too. Was this, you're not the Senobios, are you? Okay, all right, just making sure for the. Okay, we will, we will skip a couple of those agenda items that were coming up there and, and move on to our hearing since it's after eight oh five. Uh, we will need a, a motion to open the public hearing for DD four, O K D. So, motion by Garmin. I'll second. Second by Whacker to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Uh, if not, a roll call vote, please.
Haas.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Whacker.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes. Okay, public hearing is open.
This is a sign sheet. If you're here for the DD four open ditch hearing, please sign. There are handouts in the back. Um, we will try to put it up on the projector, um, but if you want handouts to look at, they are on the table in the back.
Very good, and, uh, we are going to begin the public hearing here by reading the petition that was given to the board here a couple of months ago and, and which this meeting is, the context of why this meeting is happening. I'll go ahead and read that then to start with. Petition for information, Drainage District Four. The landowners of Kasuth County Drainage District Four are requesting an account of district work done from January first, two thousand nineteen to present. This must include the following: District Four FEMA main open ditch repairs, all repair work receiving FEMA dollars, projections of cost, landowners have been told they are responsible for fifteen percent. And thus far, landowners have been billed the following: Twenty twenty-three, three hundred thousand dollars; twenty twenty-four, seven hundred thousand dollars; twenty twenty-five, three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, less interest warrants outstanding. The landowners request an, an accounting of where all FEMA dollars have been used as it pertains to Kasuth County drainage projects. The landowners also request the name of the individual that prepared the handout information used in Drainage District Number Four Open Ditch Information Meeting held on August sixth, two thousand twenty-four, signed by a number of landowners. Yep, and, and so that is what we are responding to today as a board and presenting information, uh, on such subjects. Supervisor Stecker is obviously not here, but he is over electronically and is not feeling well today, and so. Please, he prepared some comments in, in a form of a letter to be read since he is the supervisor representing the district that this, this drainage district is in. So, I will read Supervisor Stecker's comments here. To whom it may concern, I would like to start off with an apology to the citizens, landowners, and taxpayers in Kasuth County. We, as a county, failed you all in multiple ways over multiple years. The issues we are trying to explain now stemmed from very simple lapses in oversight, as simple as balancing your own checkbook at home. The drainage assessment sheets the board was presented from two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-four in general, each showed the outstanding balances for each drain and some comments, but they never showed any amounts for incoming funds due from landowners who had signed up for waivers to their assessments from major projects. For anyone who does not know, waivers are basically a loan to pay your drainage assessment over a period of ten to twenty years, if allowed by the board, with the cost of your original assessment being the principal balance and interest is added to that. This simple lack of comparison of dollars and versus, dollars in versus dollars out equated to the county's assessments being heavily at risk of being inadequate and not getting caught if they were short in a timely manner, which happened to over a dozen drainage districts during this period. Multiple districts received six-figure additional levies over the last couple of years due to the oversight and management when assessments were done. And now there are multiple legal challenges to the board's authority to issue those follow-up assessments, which is resulting in substantial costs for legal fees and will also get assessed to the drains' landowners. The reality is, to the best of my knowledge, we, as a board, have no other option than to assess the owners of each drain for the outstanding balances due per IO Code, Chapter four sixty-eight. The discussion about Drain Four has been a heightened conversation due to the complexity of many factors, including FEMA, all rolled into one, but it has been far from an isolated situation in this county. However, in my opinion, all those factors and the discussion about those factors are relatively pointless now because any, once anyone understands the basic mechanics of what happened and why it happened, the only thing left that I am concerned with is fixing the problem and moving forward, which is, which I committed to doing last year. The hours I have personally spent in the auditor's office working hand-in-hand with our auditor and her staff is proof of that desire and focus from the time this issue was found, especially through this year's assessment process. I have remained relatively quiet in the discussion about DD four thus far this year because I have already explained this situation and my understanding of the core mechanics of the issues multiple times. And for a few select individuals, I am confident there is nothing I can say that will ever satisfy them because their anger and questions are politically motivated rather than motivated by the facts of the situation. The rehashing of this topic is wasting valuable resources of time, energy, money, et cetera, that could be put towards things that would benefit the residents and taxpayers of this county instead of what we are doing now. I strongly believe the most important thing to focus on right now is the board and the auditor working together to implement policies, procedures, which could outline the exact process that, that should be completed to prepare assessments each year. By documenting these steps in policy, in addition to discussing and approving them in the boardroom, we could and should show all affected landowners that we have taken steps to prevent these situations from happening again. Sincerely, Kyle Stecker, Kasuth County, Fourth District Supervisor. And then, and then we will move on to the spreadsheets that Tammy has prepared, and we should have those up on the screen as well, um, for everyone to see. And this will give a, a, a synopsis, an accounting of, of, uh, the information that you're, you're wanting to see going back a little bit farther in time. So, I'll let Tammy take it over from here and, and present what she has.
Okay, thanks, TJ. Before I get started, I also wanna send an apology to all landowners in DD four. Um, I, I'm very sorry that this is happening to you and that this is an additional four late amount that you have to pay. Um, the auditor's office sincerely apologizes, uh, for this. Um, and I don't have any better answers than that, and I apologize for that, too. I wanna thank Kyle for working with me through this, and I especially want to thank member Garmin. Her and I have spent countless hours on this together, um, trying to give you a complete story of what has happened. Um, and, uh, together, we've been able to, to put together these spreadsheets to hopefully answer questions that you have as to why we are here today. So, we'll just get started. Um, the first column on this spreadsheet is the year. We went back to twenty eleven, twenty twelve, so that we could give you the best picture we can of what, um, our fund, which is five one zero one one, that's DD four open ditch fund, and what this looks like. The second column is warrants issued. Warrants are, um, checks basically that can't be cashed for bills that we have to pay. Uh, warrants outstanding are those bills that we still have to, or those checks that still are be, are out there that can't be cashed. And warrants redeemed are those checks that have been called in and have been cashed. And then interest paid. Um, assessed means the amount that the drainage district was assessed per year. Issued versus assessed difference means the difference between the amount of bills that we had to pay and what was assessed that year. And then drainage tax received and then FEMA reimbursement. So, in twenty eleven, twenty twelve, we had thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-eight cents in warrants issued, and seven thousand dollars was assessed that year. In twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, fifteen thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-two cents were issued. Fifteen thousand dollars was assessed that year. In thirteen fourteen, seventeen thousand one hundred and nine dollars and seventeen cents was issued, and fifteen thousand dollars was assessed. In fourteen fifteen, thirteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and seven cents was, was billed, and thirteen thousand five hundred dollars was assessed. In fifteen sixteen, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and four cents was issued, and twenty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars was assessed. In twenty sixteen, seven hundred and nine thousand twelve dollars and twenty-one cents was issued, and zero dollars was assessed. In seventeen eighteen, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-seven cents was issued, and eight hundred and twenty-three thousand fourteen dollars and ninety-eight cents was assessed. In eighteen nineteen, fifty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents was issued, and seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars was assessed. In nineteen twenty, thirteen thousand fifty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents was issued, and eight thousand dollars was assessed. Twenty twenty-one, a hundred and seventy-two thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars issued, twenty thousand assessed. Twenty-one twenty-two, two hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents was issued, zero was assessed. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, a million two hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-four cents was issued, and zero was assessed. Twenty-three twenty-four, three hundred and eight thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents was issued, three hundred thousand assessed. Twenty-four twenty-five, twenty thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars was issued, and seven hundred thousand dollars was assessed. Total, up to the end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, only three hundred, I'm sorry, three million eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and one cent has been issued, assessed two million six hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. The difference being one million one hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and three cents. We have been reimbursed from FEMA of nine hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. That's as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. If you go to the next page, scroll down a little bit. Sorry, TJ. So, what does this mean? What, what's, um, what does this look like? What's gonna happen? So, right now, there's four hundred and four thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents of warrants outstanding. There's ninety-eight thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and fifteen cents waivers due. If we win the appeal with FEMA, we will receive five hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty cents. We have received the ten percent of FEMA dollars from the state of a hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy cents.
It is now joining.
If we win the appeal, we will receive an additional ten percent from FEMA, which will be seventy-five thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. We owe other districts a hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-five cents. We will receive five percent, uh, for CATC for administrative fees, sixty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. If we win the appeal, we will receive an additional five percent for CATC for administrative fees and thirty thousand eight hundred and six dollars and forty-eight cents. So, if the appeal is successful, the balance in the DD four fund will be four hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-three cents. Again, this does not include, um, anything after June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five except for the amount that we have received from FEMA, that ten percent. Okay, if we go to the next spreadsheet, one of the things that was asked in the petition was, was FEMA dollars. And so, this spreadsheet kinda breaks that out a little bit. So, in, in revenue from FEMA, in twenty twenty-one, we received thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars for the twenty eighteen high-water snowmelt. In seventeen eighteen, there was the ditch cleanup, uh, phase two assessment, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-five cents. And sixteen seventeen, the first phase, nine seventy-eight, five thirty-four, seventy-four. So, in, twenty-one twenty-two, we received two hundred and seventy-six thousand two dollars and eleven cents for fifteen eighty-three, which was the twenty nineteen storm disaster. In twenty-three twenty-four, we received six hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred and ten dollars and ninety-eight cents for a total of nine hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars and nine cents. And that is pretty much the total of the FEMA dollars, um, that we have received. Um, we still are waiting for seven hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-six cents. Eighty-five percent of that is federal, ten percent state. So, we hopefully will be receiving five hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty cents. FEMA did, for those of you that are not aware, FEMA did deny, um, our first request. We are on appeal. They have ninety days from, remember, what date did you say?
It was, was it from last Thursday?
Yeah, from last Thursday. Thursday. So, they have ninety days to make their decision if we're gonna receive those funds or not. And that's, and the worksheet is.
Okay. And so, all the information, uh, I, one thing to point out on the petition, too, is it, it lists that there was three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars assessed in twenty twenty-five, which was, that was not assessed in twenty twenty-five. But the three hundred thousand and the seven hundred thousand were assessed in twenty-three and twenty-four. Just wanted to make a note of that, um, so there was no confusion.
And just to, um, kind of explain what this worksheet with the green and white shows is that the reason that we are, we're here today is because the amount of warrants that have been issued, the amount of bills that have come in, um, we have not assessed enough over the years to cover those bills. So, um, that's why those assessments of three hundred thousand and seven hundred thousand dollars were done. As you can see underneath, um, the warrants issued and the assessed is a rolling total. So, you can see as you go down, um, how much was issued and how much was assessed, kinda to show you when and where we got to where we are today.
Right. Any other comments that the board wants to make before?
I just, I think we should acknowledge that Leon Freeman is here.
Yep, yep, I was gonna mention that, too. So, Leon Freeman is here. He is our consultant for FEMA dollars. So, if, for specific questions pertaining to FEMA especially, he is here to answer, help answer some of those questions. So, thanks for being here, Leon. Yeah. What's that?
I said, yes.
Oh, yep. Well, we will open it up to questions and, and I would request, if you have questions, please come up, state your name, uh, to the podium here and, and address the board in that way, and, uh, and we'll proceed from there. Please keep it, we, within a couple of minutes, if I could ask that, just 'cause we do have a lot of people, um, out of respect to that, so. Keep your comments respectful as always. Is there anyone with further questions, comments that they would like to make pertaining to the petition and, and the subject at hand? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, this, uh, the final portion of the, the petition regarding the individual that prepared the handout information's name, that according to, um, our county attorney is not a public record, and so that is not something the board has available to provide you today. Um, that was not something we could attain, so. And again, any other questions, or I know it's a lot of numbers and information to digest, and. Good morning, Don.
Hi, Ben.
Because most people don't be here, so. Okay, regarding to the project, we see that the, uh, previous project was off the courthouse records. In December, there was, uh, In December, there was, uh, one million four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, six hundred, six hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents was collected. On December eighteenth for the previous projects done by the engineering and rights. With a, uh, and then in nineteen January, there was eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty cents collected. But what we were told from the auditor's office, one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars on waiver, showing that was one million six hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. It was pretty much covered for that project. Now, this all comes off of courthouse records, so. So moving on to the ten mile project. There was, uh, use of FEMA money in twenty twenty-two of about two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. And, uh, collected in two thousand twenty-three through November, there was a total of nine hundred and ninety thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents collected. If you subtract the three hundred thousand that was collected for the landlords, leaves that FEMA dollars with six hundred and ninety, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. So if we, um, buy FEMA records, the ten mile project was, uh, had a dedicated dollar amount going off of FEMA records here. And there was a distraction of dedicated dollars, the dedicated dollars originally, Leon, if I'm wrong, did you correct me?
You're wrong. No, Don. I'll, I'll give an explanation when you're done.
Yeah, but no, I'm just, if I'm wrong, I'll, I'll, I know, I know correctly. It says on this document that obligated the funds of one million two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars eighty-four and twelve cents. There was some deductions from that, which reduced it to one million two hundred and thirty-one thousand one ninety-seven. So when you take the dedicated funds for the project, what we show from county records being provided, that leaves a negative of two hundred and sixty-one thousand two hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-seven cents. That's going off actual, what was collected and what was paid yet. That shows the deficit there, we're short about that much money. Well, if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, I'll stand corrected. And then if you go and figure it another way, figured back, um, in the records of Tammy, and thank you Tammy, you did a very fine job of writing the information. I really appreciate what you did there. And with that, we showed that FEMA funds, there was three payments totaling, uh, nine hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars. And if you take, uh, subtract that from the, uh, what was there in front of the dedicated funds, that leaves a negative two hundred and eighty-eight, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-one cents that we haven't seen for our project. Now, we've been told, Vince and I have been told that the dollars that we're waiting on from FEMA are all in regard to main ditch four. There's three projects of the, of the deductions that happened on, to reduce the dedicated funds. And, and it's been kind of hard for us to get this information, but there was, uh, three DI numbers, includes three, biggest four. And DI number three eleven, three sixty-two, three eleven, three sixty-four, and three eleven.
Three seven seven.
Three seven seven. And that corresponding cost is thirty-two thousand five hundred and one dollars, correct?
Yes, sir.
And those were not projects done in grain four main ditch. They're out of HK three forty-six and grain one twelve and PK one. So we, for main ditch brackets, we lost two two thousand dollars because of finally, uh, never.
If you don't mind.
No, no, I'm asking.
No, I, okay, I appreciate that. Those three entities, um, were in, and, and, and I may be corrected, but I believe it was Roger's district. They were never even looked at, they were looked at by FEMA, they were never repaired whatsoever. So we couldn't claim any costs on them, we had to deduct them from our costs. They weren't repaired.
Yeah, but they weren't in, they weren't in the main four ditch project?
No.
No, and so why were they reduced from the dedicated dollars for main four ditch project?
Because there's two projects when we first started on. There was, there was a northern half and a southern half, I want to say more or less. We combined those two projects to make one, to make it, try to make it easier administratively on staff. So we literally had six hundred and fifty thousand here and about four hundred and eighty thousand here, we made it a one point two million dollar project. They were combined, I have every single site.
No, not both.
That's the reason, that's the reason you're seeing a small handful of sites outside of DD four in the project, was because they decided to combine those two.
Well, some of them weren't so small.
No, I, I said, I've got every single cost and every line item in this little folder right here, so I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
So when you're talking about projects, you're talking about project twelve sixty-five and fifteen eighty-three?
Correct.
Correct.
Those two were combined to make one.
If you look at twelve sixty-five, there are multiple drainage districts that are involved in twelve sixty-five.
Yeah, and twelve sixty-five was basically ninety-five percent complete when we combined them. So most of these costs you're seeing come out of DD four.
Well, we were within, when they were merged, we were within two weeks of the closing hearing on DD four open ditch cleanup fifteen eighty-three. That was already completed when the actual project was completed, when you merged twelve sixty-five with fifteen eighty-three.
When McCarty went, you mean McCarty and all that? Cause the project was actually completed, what, last, last year?
Oh, no, we've had, we've had the completion hearing a long time ago on that.
I got the final payment in my office, I don't have it with me.
But that's, that was the question that I posed at the time, was like, you merge twelve sixty-five with fifteen eighty-three. When we were completed, we'd already received FEMA funding for project fifteen eighty-three. Now all of a sudden we threw in another project with multiple drainage districts, that, the way I look at it, it, it has added the debt to project fifteen eighty-three, correct?
Uh, to some extent, we had, we had an area, and, and I'm going back a ways too, Don. We had an area that kind of encompassed both fifteen eighty-three and twelve sixty-five. And it was going to be really hard to separate that, I think, from a construction standpoint. Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, but the board requested that they thought administratively, and this, I didn't do it, the board just said, hey, I think we would like to combine these two projects to make it administratively much easier. And granted, this is twenty twenty-two, maybe somewhere in there, yeah, Tammy might not help me out on that. And I just said that that's what you want, and I, and I did the scope change, and I changed it to merge them, and, you know, it had to go to FEMA, it had to be blessed by the state, et cetera, et cetera. The one thing I do want to mention, your Bolton May did an assessment on what was going to take to do the repairs that we're kind of discussing right now, which is obligated at one point two million, uh, they were one point eight million. FEMA did their own estimate and came up with one point two, and in my opinion cheated us out of about six hundred thousand dollars. But it's a large project, and a large project, and Don, you know this, we've been on the board for years, it's closed out on actuals. So I submitted the closeout and it was right about one point nine million.
We had project twelve sixty-five and.
Yes, both. Basically, it was.
Twelve sixty-five the original project.
No, it was both.
Let's get that straight.
It was both.
Right.
Yeah.
So twelve sixty-five, to my knowledge, only had two miles that were DD four open ditch.
Yes, I would say roughly yes.
But yet when I submitted to FEMA, by the looks of it, the paperwork that you submitted, it all says DD four open ditch.
Oh, no, this doesn't all say DD four, I got multiple locations in here. There's a lot of open ditch, but there's sixteen locations.
The line that debt right now is sitting on DD four fifteen eighty, project fifteen eighty-three.
Because I'm assuming most of the twelve sixty-five has probably been assessed from some of the reimbursements. I, I'm just guessing, I don't know your financials, I, I know kind of how it works, I've been, worked in this county since Don was up there. I, I know a little bit about how the operation works. Um, it's not a hundred percent assessed to DD four, but I would say a majority of it is.
Well, we asked for that, we haven't been able to get it yet.
I've got every single location.
We've asked for the, the denied, uh, PI invoices, and to this day, we have not received one.
This is how FEMA looked at it. FEMA said, we obligated one point two million. We turned, but FEMA also, when they obligated this project, never obligated a dime for engineering, which is crap. You have to be able to engineer these digits, whether it's going from a one-to-one slope, two-to-one slope, whatever the case may be, there has to be engineering involved. And I believe it's part of four sixty-eight, part of I O C O. Uh, FEMA didn't give us a dime for engineering. So to me, that right there, we spent three hundred and some thousand, I think, in engineering. So in my opinion, we should be looking at one point five, one point six, it should have been obligated at. And our cost to do actual repairs came in, engineering, uh, and repairs, and we got McCarty, we got Wrights, and we got everybody else, right about one point nine. So there was a seven hundred thousand dollar difference that basically we came in over what FEMA estimated. FEMA said, well, we can't tell if the scope of work was done. This is their reason, this is our idea. And I, and, uh, and my argument was, it's not your job to tell what contractor does the scope of work. You had your engineer sign off, the scope of work was completed, that should be the end of the story. FEMA has changed, a lot of it has to do with the, you know, recent man in, in White House. The whole situation, it's, they are reaching gray areas that we haven't seen before. I haven't seen before in sixteen years that I've been doing this, and the state is in, you know, and they're in the same boat.
But wasn't this, uh, seven hundred fifty-one thousand dollars turned down to two thousand twenty-four?
Yes.
Well, that was in the White House.
No, no, but I mean, right now, the appeal didn't get to him, it just tell, the appeal didn't go till a week ago. Trust me, it's this White House.
You can't blame this White House.
Oh, yes, I can.
But we can blame this White House, but we blamed last White House for a lot.
Yeah.
But this denial was done in two thousand twenty-four, as I understand, right, correct?
By the local region, correct. By the local Kansas City region, yes.
And then if.
Do you mind if I add something Leon?
No, go ahead.
So, and, um, so when FEMA denied it, they don't deny it invoice by invoice, they deny amount. So they approved, yes, a love sum. So the reason you can't get invoices that were denied is because they don't deny invoices, they deny paying the rest of it. So they don't approve these and deny these, they say, we're gonna give you this much money and this much money we're not.
So all the dollars could have been paid and project twelve sixty-five wasn't then.
No, I mean.
Well, if you're saying just a certain dollar amount.
That's what they do, they approve a dollar amount.
Then, and we had no idea on invoices, we had no clue then. So it could be twelve sixty-five, what they've done on twelve sixty-five was the ones that are being disputed and, uh.
It could be anything, can you help with that?
Well, FEMA obligated one point two, I turned in one point nine. FEMA says, where's that seven hundred thousand dollars come from? And with multiple contractors on there, and Tyler Conley, your engineer, Bolton May did a great job, he tracked every DI down, this is Wrights'll did, this is who McCarty did. This is who did this, this is who did that, and now FEMA is looking at that information to say, okay, obviously they can't tell exactly who did what. In less than ninety days, we're gonna find out if we get our seven hundred and fifty thousand. There's no way they can deny the engineering portion.
And, uh, in grain four, from what we've gotten from, we got some information from FEMA. That's what happened, there, we had some invoices that evidently FEMA looked at. And two of the invoices that were rejected were done in two thousand and four, the ten mile project were given engineered. For forty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. They were, they were turned down in this request of the seven hundred fifty-one thousand dollars.
Forty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-five?
Yeah. Forty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-four.
That's because they couldn't tell who did it, and we have supplied that information in our deal.
Why wouldn't that information, I mean, it looks like there's been a lot of black bookwork here.
Lub, uh, Lubatol did it.
Yeah, we're aware of that. They were also done about, uh, their consecutive projects, even nature work, and they ensured that they knew it for a hundred percent, right? So, but FEMA turned those down today. If we don't see this money, these are two of the projects that have been turned down, is that correct?
If they deny our appeal, we still have one more, we still have a second appeal. Um, yeah, those two could easily be those two projects, correct? I can't say they would or wouldn't be, but they, well, certainly could.
Yeah, that's what the question we're raising, is that it looks like a lot of things are eating into some appeals.
Yeah.
That have cost this district a lot of money.
Yep.
And working, it was done without, and back in two thousand twenty, I checked with the management in Iowa, and that is two bodies weren't approved at that time.
Those two weren't approved? Yeah, I don't even know where those two are, but.
Well, I mean, that's what we were told then, so, I mean.
Well, I.
Work was done, it's burned the limits for a hearing, those two bodies right now, they haven't been settled. We've been paying compound interest on them since two thousand.
And I think the worst case scenario would be that FEMA sticks to their original, you know, no, we're not going to allow it, which, you know, the state has supported everything that we sent. But it, they've done that before, and I've seen FEMA just say no. And unfortunately, they fleece themselves.
The one difference, when I worked with, with.
I worked with you behind those chairs.
And some, uh, we got a lot of those funds before we did the work.
They've changed the game. Before, a large project used to be thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Right.
And if anything was less than that, they would send you the seventy-five percent cut and share right out there. A large project is now a million thirty-seven thousand dollars. So they, they, they keep raising the bar, and we gotta keep providing more and more, and administratively, it's costing you folks, taxpayers and everybody, three times more than it used to ten years ago. It just, I, I think the key is, is in ninety days, we're gonna know where, where, the county's gonna know where they're sitting. You know, I'm expecting to win this appeal, if I don't, I'll be very disappointed, and then I will discuss with the board, I would like to go straight to litigation from an arbitration perspective and sit in front of three judges. Bobby, do you want to spend ten grand to try and get seven hundred?
Well, I would rather not spend a million dollars.
But you've done that already.
Yeah, that's history. We do have invoices on turned down projects, the money to two hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. But we don't have the rest of them, the rest of the PI.
I have.
We requested that now, and then, and then back lanes to this.
Yeah.
This one we requested on eighty twenty, we requested again, requested by Vince, and I requested from Tammy, when Tammy couldn't give us this information, I asked her, we put the request to all the board members. Somebody holds this information, somebody submitted, he did that, and we're quarters.
I have.
Well, who did?
They were Rogers.
What?
Ro, I had to, Roger had to, I want to say, basically, we had an open discussion and, um, he said, go ahead and remove those three projects, and it added up to a four million dollars.
I'm not talking about the ones that were removed, I'm talking about the ones that were denied.
Well, I mean, the work was done, but it was done a hundred percent incorrectly, and I couldn't turn the, I couldn't turn the costs in.
Which one are you talking about?
What's the other engineer that we used outside of Bolton and May? Kyle, you remember his name?
Um, I think you're referring to, uh, DD four lateral eleven, which would have been McClure, an engineer.
McClure.
But that's not main ditch.
I, I don't know, I just know that, I, I just know I had to, I had to, I just had to say about two hundred, um, I, that's the only ones I know of where.
You're, you're right, it's not on the main open ditch, it's on lateral eleven. It was a project that's already been done and over with, um, but we went through the information, me, Roger, Leon, Marge, went over the information, and, um, with what we had for facts or circumstances around it, it was very obvious that it was not largely caused by the disaster. Um, it was maintenance that was needed over a period of time, and Roger made the decision that he didn't want. And Roger made the decision that he didn't wanna pursue something if it wasn't something we were going to receive. And I agreed with it. I mean, we had pictures of pipes that were clearly rusted off and had been there for a long period of time, unknown, but um, that does not pertain to the main open ditch.
Well, on the DI's that we have, we have HK two thirty-six, drain eighty, five west, HK five eighty-seven, HK three forty-six, drain one twelve, drain one thirty-two, PK one and drain one fifty-nine.
Would that have all been project twelve sixty-five, prior fifteen eighty-three combine?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
You had mentioned, you said twelve sixty-five was ninety-five percent done, and you merged it with fifteen eighty-three.
I think there was just a small section of it left. I don't remember where it was, to be honest with you.
But though, I think it was pretty close. In the letter to FEMA, it was stated for accounting simplicity, if it was that close to being done, why would you merge it with a project that was...
I don't think, like you said, I, I was just asked to merge them, so I merged them.
By ask by who?
The board.
The board?
Yeah. I can't, I mean, I'm hired by them.
I asked board questions specifically about you, and a lot of them have never met you before, talked to you before, and not even, other than Kyle, working...
Kyle and Roger are probably the only two I dealt hand in hand. Those are the only two I ever had damages with.
And, and I think that's part of the problem is a lot of the board hasn't been involved in a lot of this. So when we ask them questions...
That's not Leon's problem.
My que, well, let me ask you this. My question is, doesn't each board member have a district?
Yes.
So if you don't have damages in that district, you're not gonna know a damn thing about what I'm asking unless you have to...
But they're all fire trustees of the district.
I agree. So, and, and it, you know, it worked, it's worked that way with me multiple times. I know I worked one-on-one with Don at times. I worked one-on-one with Roger in his times. And then I worked, uh, I think, and I can't remember the other gentleman's name, and I thought it was Don, just prior to...
You're right, Don.
Don Wong.
Yeah, uh, I think he had one or two small little things in his area, but DD four seemed to be the main bracket where I was working. But I haven't, I haven't even spoken a word to Howard. I haven't spoken a word to that gentleman either. Um, I have been up here a handful of times, and I am more than willing to come up at any point in time and discuss some of this stuff. Um...
Leon and I have worked a little bit.
Uh, Carter has called me, yeah, Carter's called me a handful of times trying to get clarification on this, so...
You were at a work session one afternoon, and then it didn't, by yourself, and board, I was here.
Yeah, I was asked to come and said in case I was needed. That's what I did. And then, and then if I should have stood up and introduced myself, I apologize.
I don't know, and it wasn't Leon's fault that he didn't, you know, it, we, I didn't know he was here either. But I wish we would have announced that he was here. That's why I said we should do that today, so that people were aware.
Who he was that day either, from what I'm saying. So I, I mean, a lot of vague things happening here that uh...
Well, we don't, we don't wanna be vague anymore.
No, I know, and I appreciate, Amber, I really appreciate what you and Tammy have done to try to help clarify the situation for us. I really do. I think we all...
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. But we wanna work together more. We can do better, and we've said that. You know, I think we all should have that communication with Leon. Um, even if he does deal one-on-one with the supervisor, at least then, maybe be available for an update to everyone. Um, in case anyone else on the board has questions, so that we're all aware of the same things.
So the dollar amount that we're waiting from, from FEMA, main ditch, drain four, is what is on my, you and Tammy?
Seven...
Well, um, seven forty-four, nine ninety-three, seventy-six, I think is what, after those two...
And about three fifty of that is engineering, and the balance is just construction.
Yeah, so, so it's...
What would be the harm of having the work orders, invoices, among that much money, provided to the owners of the spinning engine?
Last week asked for that. Which workers would you ask for?
Well, what's denied?
We don't have invoices for that.
They, they all...
They deny amount.
Deny the difference between what they obligated and what we actually closed it at. They just said, we're denying that balance.
Well, then, why did they provide this with these work orders to move two sixty-five? I, I, that's where I'm getting a little funny. Why can't we know what actually been denied?
They just denied a lump sum. They didn't deny one particular DI. They didn't deny anything. They denied a lump sum of the difference between their obligation and what we actually closed it at. That is what FEMA did. Now, three hundred and fifty of that is engineering. I'm expecting that to be a no-brainer.
Well, then why would they assign DI numbers at least?
You have to assign a DI number. When a site inspector goes out and looks, he has to sign a damage inventory line item for every single site.
So then, so then these are DI numbers that were rejected. So I, I'm not calling it. It, it looks to me like there shouldn't be invoices, work orders.
I don't have, there wasn't a single DI line item that was rejected that I saw from the uh, determination memo.
Yeah, it was. There was three on uh, HK three thirty-six.
Well, yeah, the three that weren't, the three that were not done, the three that we had to disclose because they weren't part of the system, yes.
That was before, that was...
Yeah, that was the thirty-some, thirty-seven thousand, yeah. I, Roger and I had that conversation one-on-one, and I just said, we can't claim that, and he said, okay, drop it.
And Don, if I may, uh, just, I just wanna be respectful to everybody here too. If anybody else has questions, I know you have a lot of questions, and we can come back to that. Um, but is there anyone else here that would have some questions for the board or for Leon? I wanna make sure we get to them while we're all here today. And if not, that's fine.
It's, Don, I can completely understand your confusion, because it is a cluster. It's the federal government.
Well, I understand that the complexity and the confusion was Tammy and Amber trying to get...
Yeah, and...
And I believe they did a very good, but okay, here's a question I have, Leon, when you track this, and we're showing what we've been paid so far on the dedicated funds, we're still short about two hundred eighty thousand dollars.
I will explain how the reimbursements work real quick.
Okay.
I can, with special request to the state, I can reimburse seventy-five percent of the project. That's basically the federal share. The state usually only allows seventy-five of the seventy-five. But I requested we use the full seventy-five percent, so we can maintain as much funding as possible during the process. But I can only allow reimbursements, or should say, the state will only allow me to reimburse seventy-five percent of the obligated amount. FEMA obligated one point two. We spent one point nine. So I could only reimburse you seventy-five percent of the one point two, which I did up to every penny that I could put into the pockets of the county.
Well, that, that variance is, it goes under that seventy-five percent, that's...
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause Don, for example, out of that seven hundred and some thousand that, that FEMA denied, we're only getting five hundred and fifty-eight, seven forty-five, thirty of that.
Right.
Hopefully.
If we win the appeal.
If we win the appeal.
And it's, and it's, this is, nothing against anybody that's sat up there, but I, I can't believe I'm gonna say this, Don. I agree with it.
Well, who?
You.
Really?
Yes. This is the first time since two thousand twelve. When you limit you and your districts, and you and your districts, and you and your districts, and not share it as a whole, I think it can be probably very confusing for what you're trying to portray out here to the public. Um, if, I do nine drainage districts across the state. I was one of the state folks, the only people that enjoyed doing drainage districts. They're, they're a different animal. This is the only situation I deal with at the state. The rest of them, the board, are controlled as a whole. Uh, now, you usually have an engineer as a point man, or consultant as a point man myself, but it's as a whole, and not just, you know, divided the county into portions, and, and Carter has this section, and Amber has this section, and Howard has this section, Kyle has this section. I, I think it makes it harder for you, um, to have me explain to you what's going on, and you're like, I have no frickin' clue. And it's the same as Don sitting in his chair asking you, and you're like, I don't know.
That's right.
So, it, it is just, just my assessment. And, and by no means does it, you know, it's, it's how the county has worked, you know, or it's how it's working. But it's just an assessment for me. I, I think it would be better if we did it as a whole. Uh, it would be much easier to explain to your constituents.
We have to recognize the fact that we're into this project for a million dollars right now. And if you fail, I guess the FEMA money, we're gonna be...
I'm not good at failing, Don. I'm not good, I'm not good at failing.
Well, okay, I mean, but it'll be another five hundred thousand.
Yes.
Something that was sold to us about a hundred dollars earlier.
Yes.
Okay. I, I still have a hard time understanding that they are making denials on figures and not on invoices, so... And invoices, you have DI numbers on it.
Yes, Kyle?
Yeah, um, there was just a comment made about, we're into this project for a million dollars, and there'll be another five hundred thousand if this does not come up. And I guess I'd like to address that quick. Um, if you look at the spreadsheet that Tammy provided, um, which I actually have, there's a couple of numbers that changed a little bit from the previous version a week ago that we looked at. But from FY twenty to FY twenty-five, um, there was about two million dollars, just over two million dollars of what was issued for warrants. And then, in that same time period, FY twenty to FY twenty-five, there was just under two million. I have a balance of thirty-three thousand. I know there's a couple of numbers Tammy and I talked about yesterday that changed. But on July seventh of twenty twenty is when Bolden Bank was appointed for that project. And between what has already came from FEMA and what has been assessed in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, we're within thirty thousand dollars of what that project would have costed. So, it's not true to say that it's gonna cost another five hundred thousand. That five hundred thousand, or whatever, could potentially be assessed if this appeal is not successful. Whether you look at the new assessment or the previous assessments, there was other balances there that are needing to be factored in. It's not going to be one point five million dollars that was assessed for this FEMA project. Um, that's factually not correct.
If we were fifty-six point uh, five percent over the project cost, Kyle, why was there not another public hearing then?
I uh...
That's all, that's a difference of what FEMA had obligated. That has nothing to do with the public hearing process that we went through. And actually, that's a good point, is there's a lot of confusion of FEMA's projects versus our projects, and FEMA's processes versus Iowa code four sixty-eight. They do not correlate cleanly. They could have. Uh, and hindsight's twenty twenty. If we had known, or if it had been better explained to us at the time about how the projects administratively get handled, it would have been much cleaner to put all of the site inspections, all the DI's for drain four open ditch in one project, and have everything else in other drainage districts in separate FEMA projects. The reality is, when all this stuff was happening, FEMA had all this stuff put together. We sent them repair requests and kind of told them what we had for issues. And then they put projects together, which did not correlate with our drainage district boundaries. So, the fact that this is confusing and overlaps multiple districts is unfortunate. But that wasn't intentional or anything like that. It was unfortunate way the process happened. But the reason those two projects were combined was because we had part of the DI's in one FEMA project, and part of the DI's in another FEMA project, that all correlated with the same engineered project that we had our public hearings on. So, it was combined to put those together, so that we could say, all of these DI's as a group were paid out of these, these project invoices for one project, because Bolden Bank's report doesn't break it down by each mile. Um, actually, I think they did at one point in time to provide stuff to FEMA, but that's irrelevant.
I have the project report from twelve sixty-five, Kyle, and not one thing other than two miles has one thing to do with DD four open ditch. Not one thing.
We couldn't just pick and choose and say, we're taking these two DI's.
Has a thing to do with DD four open ditch.
Isn't that the two miles that enters from the northern half to the southern, or southern to the northern?
The two miles that were done before the public hearing even took place, or was happening as the public hearing took place. That were consecutive work orders that were split illegally.
I do, I do wanna mention one thing, and then for your, it's not gonna sell, sell your mind by any means, but your engineer has put an estimate together of one point eight million. So the actual overrun of what we actually closed on by your engineer is roughly only a five percent markup, which is extremely close.
Actually, it's, the actual cost of the project on DD four open ditch was less than the engineer's estimate that was provided to FEMA. It's not an overrun based on the estimate that was provided to FEMA. It's an overrun based on FEMA's checkers.
Get the rules. If FEMA has a license-stamped engineer's estimate, their policy is they wish, they should use it. They didn't. That right there has caused us the seven hundred thousand dollars they supposedly can't seem to justify. That's my argument in the very beginning. You didn't even use the estimate that you should have used. I don't expect to lose this appeal, I'll be honest with you. And I wanna get the money for Kusut, 'cause I deserve it. But it's, it's a cluster to go through to get. It just is, as much as I hate to say it.
But, when we had the hearing for this project, nothing was mentioned about these other districts. So, the boards decided to combine, and part of these other districts, maybe why we're seeing not seeing money? I know, this is, still isn't very transparent.
I mean, if you look at it from a perspective of seven hundred thousand dollars, you could, you could spread it across twelve sixty-five, fifteen eighty-three, the whole, the whole shebang, 'cause it's all one project. And there's, I don't know how many locations in here. You have twelve sixty-five, I have both of them in here. There's fifty, sixty, seventy locations. Yeah, so, and FEMA isn't specifying which ones they can't quote, tell who did what. They're just, let me put it this way, I've, I've done more appeals in the last two years than I've done in sixteen years of doing one D. It's just the way FEMA is doing business, especially locally here in the Midwest. I don't agree with it, but they police themselves, they run their own show, and we just have to fight it. Well, well, FEMA has ninety days from last week, Thursday, when the state officially sent our appeal and the state's recommendation that all funds are eligible to FEMA. FEMA has ninety days. And I'm gonna tell you how it's gonna work. Around day eighty-eight, the state is gonna send us a request for information. Well, we really need you to answer these five questions, which turns around and gives us thirty days to answer, gives the state sixty days to answer FEMA, and gives FEMA another ninety days to answer. So, probably not. I just, I hate to be honest, but probably not. And the reason FEMA does that is because they haven't looked at. So if they put some questions together, it puts them back on the clock. There, I don't see any question that they could possibly ask that we haven't supplied, but trust me, they're gonna come up with it, Don. I just know they will.
I saw one correspondent wonder, people from FEMA were talking about fluff.
Yes.
A little bit of fluff, and he considered that this is a little bit more than fluff.
Yeah, this is more than fluff, yeah. I, I'm, I'm dealing with that, near that...
Email, what can we do so that...
You, you referred in that, that, that response also of uh, resort fraud. Who, who are you attenuating when you use that term?
FEMA.
FEMA. What, what would they have advantage, uh, committing for us? What, what would they have advantage to committing fraud?
They don't have to pay you seven hundred thousand dollars. Or eighty-five percent of it anyway. I believe they went against their own policy, but they didn't accept our license stamped engineer's estimate. I believe they're frauding Casuth County, the money that they rightly deserve. That is my opinion. Depending on how this all goes, um, and I may do it myself, not, not for Casuth County or whatever, because I have multiple clients that are in the same bill you are. One of Vista County, just over here, they're, they're missing twelve million dollars from two thousand nineteen, and we're still fighting. Twelve million bucks for a county conservation office. That's just ridiculous. Um, I believe they committed fraud within as well. I, as an individual, depending on how both of these turn out, may turn in an request for their fraud additions. Just me personally, I believe that the local region side of Kansas City is committing fraud against policy. That is what I meant by that. I don't believe they're following their own rules guidelines. Matter of fact, I know that. But when you police yourself, I guess maybe sometimes you can break your own rules. But I'd like to see it stand up legally at some point in time.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for all your knowledge, Leon, and being here and answering these questions.
This is why I drink.
Are there any other questions for the board?
At some point until we, we... I don't think there's any way you really get to the bottom of drainage district because this debt is off.
I'm gonna be honest with you. Until the actual appeal comes in, you are correct. There is no way to say whose dollars didn't come in, whose dollars did come in. You are correct. There is no way to say it. Until we either find out that we don't get that money or we do. And if we don't, then it's really up to that board to determine where that money has to be taken out of this. Right now it is.
We have, we have two people with raised hands here, so, Melissa, go ahead. I think you had your hand up first.
Okay, so my question's in regards to this green and white spreadsheet.
Sure.
So my question is, up until twenty seventeen where the incorrect amount is, was assessed, is there a policy or procedure in place to make sure that doesn't happen again? And that the board isn't just approving a number plunked in a spreadsheet and they're getting the right of, because there's compounded interest over ten years. It wasn't caught for seven years that people are all having to pay the interest on because someone wasn't doing correct bookkeeping.
I was just gonna say that going forward, we've got some, um, a lot of additional information that we're getting for doing those assessments and, and things like that, and we're, we are gonna actually be working on putting a written policy in on how, you know, those outstanding balances are, are assessed, um, going forward. I do believe we had, uh, some sort of verbal policy, kind of just how things were, were going before. And, um, we did discuss moving forward, actually doing a written policy on that.
And I think that, you know, what didn't take place will take place because we'll, we'll make sure of it. So what didn't take place was when there was a project. It doesn't answer the question, why the whole project wasn't even assessed? I, I have, I can answer that, but also, nothing was put in to calculate interest when that can be done when putting in that assessment for a certain number of days. That was not done. And so going forward, we were, we're gonna have a better hand on a project and what that ending amount is. And, you know, talk in length of what, what date should be put in there on as far as when that should be paid, because then that assessment will indeed cover everything. It won't leave anything behind. There was things left behind, and you're exactly right. It's, it's on everybody, and unfortunately, some people paid their whole assessment at that time, and there's probably not a way to go back and figure that out, and, you know, my apologies for that as well. I, I just, I'm, I'm kind of proud of the board so far of the things that we've done to try and get to a point to look at this and make sure that we are presenting the right information. Um, and I, I'm gonna make sure we stand together going forward and have a better process and, you know, work with our drainage clerk, our auditor. All of us are in this together regardless. So we gotta, we gotta do better, and we will do better.
Thank you for that question, Melissa.
Does that answer your question? You wanted to stand and ask a question, or are you?
Tammy, then, on the work done on project twelve sixty-five. How much of that has been paid, that work?
Say the question again, Vince. I'm sorry.
How much of the work that was done on those other drainage districts that are listed have been paid up to date?
Everything's been paid, but they, they ha, it hasn't all been redeemed.
Okay.
So, so they have the stamped warrants, but they just haven't all been called in yet.
Oh, so they're, they're stamped warrant?
They're all, always stamped warrants. That's how we pay for everything, is stamped warrants.
Alright, thank you. So Tammy, when you redeem a warrant with interest, that means you have the money in the account to pay it?
That would be a question for Nick, because the treasurer's office does all of that, but that is my understanding. Yes, he calls them in. When money comes in the account, he calls them in in the order from oldest to newest. That's my understanding, but...
The only way he gets that paid is if the money is in the account.
Correct.
I was just gonna make a, a simple recommendation. When you go through what you went through, um, Don, when we go through thirteen, fourteen, somewhere in there, fourteen? FEMA is going to come in and walk in your door, and they're going to want to do it the easiest way possible for them to walk back out the door. But it's not FEMA's disaster. It's Casuth County Drainage District's disaster. Have a point man, and I'm not pitching my services by any means. Have someone who understands what you want and how you want it done, and you tell FEMA how you want it written, the way you want it written, to literally keep, keep away from this drainage district section goes into this person's jurisdiction or whatever. You know, decide amongst yourselves, I'm going to take this jurisdiction. I understand it goes a mile and a year, but I'm gonna take the bottom two miles and it's my project. I think that would save a lot of administrative headache moving forward.
Well, with the FEMA that I had worked with, we, we all worked for representatives.
Yep.
View the project, take the coordinates. If it's estimated, return the date, the improvement, we get a number back that was approved. By the board, we all went through our pledge, didn't we? So we didn't do any work until we had the money.
Yeah.
This is different. You've done the work, you're talking about the money.
And I'll be honest with you, Don. I tell all my clients, get the work done before they even get here.
But, Don, I mean, that's the...
In my opinion, when you hand them a receipt, oop, this is what it took. It saves them from asking too many damn questions.
That time is completely different process.
You, you are correct. It was, it was a much simpler, easier process than it is today, but it's still the same process. They've just made more, more, more hurdles to jump. But I tell my, I tell my county engineers, and county engineers are the ones that carry the state in every disaster. They're the ones that have the most damages and proclaim the most money. Do it before they get here. Take a photo, do the work, hand them a receipt. They can't ask any, there's very little questions to ask. If you don't do the work, then you go through the five thousand environmental, historic, historical preservation people.
The process has changed since the Russell's, I believe.
Yeah, no, but it's also, it's not like, you know, we got one point two million dollars sitting in the bank ready to do all this work either. You know, there's, there's guarantees that you need to get these people that they're gonna get their money's worth. So I understand the process, but it, it literally helps to have someone who knows the process on the front end. You people don't work with FEMA every day, and, and they're going to do it their way, which is what they turned around and did here with this one point two million. If I was on board at the time, I would have denied, I would have said, don't sign that. Tell them you want Bolton and Mink's estimate. That's what you want for the scope of work and the one point eight million or whatever it was written at. Somewhere in that area. And, um, get that changed, and I think we really wouldn't be having much of this.
You should have been consulted at the time.
But...
You were the consultant at the time they signed.
At the time they signed the DVD? No, I did the scope change. I wasn't even here for any of the damage assessments or anything. I came on in twenty twenty-one? Mid twenty twenty-one?
Were you at the public hearing?
Yes. I did it for the state. I was working for the state then. I wasn't working in the private sector. I was just a project specialist with the state. I left the state in twenty twenty-one, during, right during that transfer period over.
When did you come on with Casuth County then?
Late twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, somewhere this winter, somewhere winter-ish. Yeah.
Well, moving forward, I would hope that you would be more upfront with the rest of the board. I know in the past, your contact has only been with Kyle and maybe some with Tammy. But I think all the, I think all the FEMA information is very pertinent to all the board members. And it should, if you get an email from FEMA, it should be forwarded to Amber immediately, any information. I mean, when, when, when somebody from the public asks, you should be able to ask, you know, the board members.
I agree with you. I'm not gonna disagree whatsoever. Keep in mind, FEMA allows you free contacts in their system. They allow you a COO, a CEO, no less, or a primary and a secondary, because if you're not available to sign, you know, we need Amber as a secondary just in case. And then they allow a third contact, because the state will allow one. So in this one, you had Kyle, and you had Marge, and you had myself.
Kyle, you, and Marge.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But a lot of the other board members were not getting the information that you guys, and I was getting the information for a while. They were very open, and then all of a sudden that stopped. You have to keep that. For some reason, I don't know why.
I, if, and this is for you folks sitting on the board. If you go through this again, God forbid, and I hate to say it, but you probably are, at some point in time, and, and whether it's me or whether it's anybody else, I would think one board meeting a month where someone like myself would show up and explain what happened in the last four meetings, where we're at, what the districts are, what we would expect for monies. I know I would drive up and do that. That wouldn't be a problem. I think it would be wise. That allows these folks, especially most of them that are gonna be affected, to at least get a briefing, and it's gonna minimize, you know, how many times they have to ask you folks for information.
Well, I think it's, you can't, uh, default the owners of this venue to ask questions.
No. Your property is getting taxed. You should ask questions. Most certainly. Like I said, this is the only of the many districts I do that this setup is this way. It's, 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 you know, it's unique, but it's just the way it's been operated for years and years and years.
And like the board's already mentioned, we're working on changing things going forward, and, and those are some good thoughts, Leon, too, um, for the board to consider for the future. Um, any other questions? Yes, sir. If you want to stand, just state your name or...
I'm John Helton.
Okay.
So, uh, one million one hundred and fifty-four six ninety-nine's the difference we're looking at that we're paying interest on right now?
The one, what, which number are you looking at there?
The issue versus assessed difference.
Oh.
You're not paying interest.
No, you're not paying interest on that number.
Because FEMA money has came in, so it, that's just looking at only what the landowners was assessed versus the number that was issued. It's not taking into consideration then that dollar amount that FEMA has.
So how much are we paying interest on right now?
You're wondering what the outstanding balance is right now.
That four hundred and four thousand.
Four hundred and four thousand. If you look at the warrants out.
On the second page.
Second page, yep. Top, top number. It's a four oh four one forty-three.
That's what's outstanding.
As of June thirtieth.
As of June thirtieth, yes.
And if FEMA comes through, then that'll be reduced by how much?
It'll, you'll be in the positive four hundred and thirteen thousand.
Correct.
If FEMA comes through.
If FEMA at all comes through, yep.
So then what happens with that, that if they do come through?
That's a good, the board will have to decide.
Yep, the board will decide. I think a couple options that are there for that money, um, that would be in the account is either it can be left in the account, of course, as an option at, to go towards paying future repairs and projects and whatever, but, uh, or I, I know there's a process for reimbursing money out to the district. Um, I don't know that that's ever been done or not, um, but that, there is something to look into there as well. What's that? I thought somebody made a comment, but, um, yeah, so there's, there's a couple of options the board could look at, and we'll, if the money comes in, then we'll have that conversation at that time.
Basically, we've been over assessed.
Then at that time, yes. Yep.
Not now?
No, no. Later will be over assessed.
If the money comes in.
If the money comes in, right. Then that's what we're all waiting for, so.
I think we've been over assessed now. If the money comes in, somebody sees reimbursement.
Yep, and that's a conversation we can have, certainly. Yep, you have another question?
So we issue a warrant, that's like a debt to the district.
It's an unpaid, yeah, it's an unpaid bill. Yep, yep, yep.
Just for first.
Yep, yep. Any other questions, or I, I think this has been, yes, go ahead.
So you're saying you're going to make changes, but then how do you know that those changes are correct? Are you come, you getting in contact with other counties? If he's saying that this is not a problem for other counties, maybe you should be checking with what they're doing before you make changes.
And we have been visiting with other counties, how they do the process, working with Leon and...
Of course, I saw that there was in like a farm news where they were having like a class on drainage district, like an educational class.
They do that. We go to those.
You go to all those?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it something that you're able to bring here that we could all learn from that class, that they've come here to the county and do that?
They're their association.
Yeah, it's the Drainage Association.
I think this has been good. I, again, I want to reiterate, um, thank you, Tammy, for preparing this, and I know especially Amber and, and the board, and Kyle, and, and the board as a whole has had a lot of discussion on this and, uh, what to present today, so I, I hope this has been helpful. Of course, if you have further questions, you're always welcome to ask, but, um, are, are there, is there anything else that pertaining to the petition for information and, and regarding this subject that you feel needs to be asked today?
Carter, I just might add that if
Yes.
these folks need an explanation, if you want me up here, then you just call me, and I, I will be here on Tuesday morning.
Very good. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Leon.
Yeah, yep, and thank you again for being here. Well, and seeing no further comments, then, uh, I would entertain a motion to both the public hearings. Any motion by Haas? Second by Garmin? Discussion? Nearing none, roll call vote, please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Waster?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes. Public hearing is closed. Appreciate you all being here and have a great week. We'll take a little break.
I'd like to introduce you to the board.
We'll take a break. Five minutes, Pam.
Five is all?
No.
Six and a half.
Compromised. You got five minutes. I didn't think you were there. Okay. I knew you were.
It will be, it will be their decision. You're correct. This one, this one. Here we are, Jim Black. Jim, let's meet the question of you. So when you decided you were? Yes. I will do. Massive disagreements in documents, um, how they're doing in this transaction. I've worked in New Jersey, I've worked in Colorado's office. Nope, pleasure meeting you. Thank you, appreciate it. Josh, I thought they were officially met. Yeah, you did hear. Hi.
And you're with?
Cause I had to spill them all over the floor, so now we're trying.
Texas.
There was a lot of this.
Oh, okay. Ori, Maxburg, Missouri. These are cutting leaves. Some of the greatest things in the world. Um, so I just needed your, um, your name. Sounds like you've denied it and there's no way, it's not even by invoice, or making this money. And so the appeal's already done. Okay, it's fine. And so they have ninety days from last Thursday. And you're appealing for the difference between the actual cost of a one point two and one point nine? Because it costs around one point nine.
Yeah. Engineering and construction, everything was one.
I appreciate it, thank you everyone. Well, it's your answer.
Yes.
We'll get to you in a second. Once everybody gets back in.
Sorry, I wasn't aware that they moved me up.
Oh, you're, you're okay. You're all right.
Hi, Don.
Oh.
I usually put the pace of the day, but not today. John Corver.
Oh, John, Jesus. How are you? Look at that, I should call that guy.
Yeah, I knew that guy. Been a little while. Get through your accent okay? Well, this is my first driving work trip this morning. Well, you're on sort of walking, it's cold, it's cold, it's on me. Thought it was a possible, probably something worth a yell, which is money, a hundred, a hundred dollars. Yeah, and it really put a different attitude. So, and even telling me that you're no, you're no, you're not, you're starting to die money when they have something to wish to try here. And they talk to you.
No, seriously, I, I don't believe it. Something got to happen.
Yeah.
Take care.
Where are you still?
I haven't what it's just.
We move now. I see the courthouse, but they haven't been able to see what you're doing. Gives each board member a chance to hopefully, you know, show off the candidacy of more.
See ya, see ya.
Well, yeah, yeah.
We'll leave them here for a minute.
I think so.
Because of litigation.
You can give them the subject.
Yeah, he's, he's wanted to know.
He's called me before and wanting to know amounts of different things and how much have we paid for this and up to this date and so.
Yeah.
So, but no, as far as the details of litigation, you can't really talk about that. Subjecting costs, yeah. I didn't realize you were John Corver's attorney.
Good morning.
Good to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Thanks for being with us.
Yep.
Once Tammy gets back, we'll, we'll do, come back to, to you first there. The tax interest. And then, and then we'll go ahead and have, have you give an update, John, after, after we have her. We have done a decent thing. I wasn't sure how long.
I was here yesterday afternoon for the party.
Oh.
A little year for the for Lee Vitichar or whatever.
Town folks.
He, he, yeah, he wanted to know what time. Everybody was here, so who knows? Did he request, are they notified, you know? Maybe Cory was going to let him know after we called him.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
We don't have a request from him to be notified.
I don't.
Okay. And he didn't say anything to me either.
And I didn't have anything in my email or anything, so.
But admitted, I, I, we didn't have a clue as to what time Doug Miller was here, Cory was here.
Cut a bunch of hay yesterday thinking we had all week and now it's seventy percent chance of rain tomorrow.
It is. When did that speak in there? I swear it just last night.
I, I know, it said twenty percent yesterday for, for Wednesday morning and now it's seventy-two percent.
Oh, okay.
Cause we still had seventy acres and didn't get a first cut in yet.
Oh, yeah. Seventy-two percent or more.
Yeah.
Or what's worse, the National Weather Service says it's twenty percent.
Oh, my, Josh's phone agrees with mine, so seventy-two.
But that's not the bad.
That's like, like what Morris Elsbecker said, it says a fifty percent chance every day.
Either Bill or, Bill or won't.
But rains, he had a hundred percent chance of rain. Doesn't rain, he had a zero percent chance of rain.
For what? Yeah, they both, I, I, I use the National Weather Service, but they were wrong. And they changed their, like, I, last, that Saturday morning when it rained and you woke up and said twenty percent, it was raining.
Yeah, yeah. I know.
After we'd had two inches.
A couple inches.
Forty percent.
Yeah.
Weather Channel says seventy-nine percent chance.
Okay. Yeah, I'm looking at, I got both weather and Grandpa National Weather Service. Yeah, and they're, they're contradicting each other. One says, yeah. My grandpa's phone and mine, I always say something completely different. Seventy-two percent?
Well, if you've got hay now, it's going to rain.
Uh, of course. Of course. Well, it's, it's, it's actually grandpa's hay, so I, I don't have any doubt.
So what you're saying is if you need rain, cut hay.
Need to rain, it won't matter what you do.
Hi, Doug.
Good morning.
Good morning. Should I grab him?
I'm sure she's over here.
I'll go see her.
I just was a backup listening, but was somebody going to notify the lawyer about what happened?
Tammy was going to send an email. Is that, is that coming up right now?
Well, it's not far now.
Okay, yeah, she was gonna send an email. I just came up here to set up a computer in case, kind of show a little bit of the. Everybody.
Okay, we'll come back to negotiation on tax interests.
Yeah, I want to pay Doc, she's, she's.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Um, my husband and I recently purchased the property at three oh eight Maple Street in Fenton. Um, it is a historic building that was moved outside of town and for quite some time is actually slated potentially for the city of Fenton to demolish it. Um, we have stepped in and, and apparently have been the seventh person or seventh entity to try to do something on this property. And for us, this will be our home. This is not a corporation. This is not a flip. This is adding value to the city of Fenton. Um, during the course of trying to straighten all the taxes out and make sure everything was completed, it was noticed that there was two thousand eight, uh, two thousand eight dollars and sixty-seven cents in back taxes due on the property. Our understanding when purchasing the property was that those back taxes, um, were, were negotiated and a tax lien previously wiped clean. And unfortunately, that's not the case. Uh, we have since added approximately twelve, twenty thousand dollars in repairs to the house, um, bringing tax revenue into the city, into the city and accounting. What I'm asking today is that, uh, the, the council potentially entertain the idea of waiving the interest rate on it, giving us some alleviation to be able to pay the rest of what is due, and that is the amount of four hundred and seven dollars.
That is it. That's the interest on the tax self certificate.
And you're just looking for the interest to be waived?
Just the interest.
There are some city specials. I believe the city will be getting their money that they have into it. They'll receive that and everything like that, so. I have three oh six.
Oh, three oh six?
On the sheets in our packet, it says four oh seven.
Yeah, I have four oh seven.
Oh, you're talking about the address, aren't you?
Oh, three oh, three oh six on the Maple Street, yes.
Okay.
Oh, oh, I see.
The amount was four oh seven.
So the amount is four oh seven?
Amount is four oh seven.
I'm sorry.
Okay, address number three.
Mine is four hundred and seven dollars.
I thought you were saying that. The amount was different.
Yeah, I was confused.
So how, how long?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
How long have you owned it?
Uh, we closed on it at the end of July.
This year?
Of this year, yes. Uh, it was, wasn't reported, uh, due to an error until the fourteenth, so officially about two weeks is what we own it.
So ignorance on my part, Nick, I'm sorry, uh, shouldn't whoever owned it previously have brought these taxes up today? It was, this has been, uh, on tax sale several times and the last company did take it on tax sale. They did, they did take me to a ta, on tax sale, but like, like Faith said, they bought this and it was. Quick lane deed?
Quick lane deed.
Quick lane deed. And they were told that there were no liens on it as far as.
Quick lane deed, and they were told that there were no liens on it as far as, um, you know, mortgage companies or things like that, because that's part of the tax cell process, they have to notify all recorded lien holders, what's going on, so. They, I don't know, they weren't really all upfront with, uh, these folks.
I understand that part, um, but, but you can, you can complete this sale without the taxes being.
So that part. With a quick lane deed, you can do about anything.
Okay.
Sorry.
I, I thought, I was thinking along the same lines, I thought you had to bring everything current too, but.
That was our understanding as well.
Yeah.
They're still willing to pay the taxes.
We can get this resolved, yeah, we'll go directly over and pay them today.
And they did, I'm sorry.
Uh, we did also pay the, this year's current taxes on it as soon as we were made aware, that was one of the things I was investigating, cause I didn't expect this year's current taxes to be paid when we purchased.
And last year's they paid, cause since it's a county level certificate, the county doesn't pay subsequent taxes, so it's not added back onto the certificate, it just sits there, and they paid last year's taxes also. So they got two years paid.
So we're looking to just.
Wipe out the.
Wipe out the.
Motion to waive interest.
Interest on the certificates.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's only, it's only affecting the county, it's not affecting anybody else.
Yes, that's only affecting the county.
Be a motion to waive interest.
How big that function?
Motion by Garmin to waive the interest on this tax certificate.
I'll second.
Second by Whacker.
Um, what about Kyle?
Yeah.
Is he on it?
Well, they shut down the team.
They set it down, they're bringing it back.
He's gone.
Yep.
Just ringing it back, but he's probably missed.
Missed the discussion.
Do you wanna do this one without him, and then have him join?
I'd say we can just.
Just.
Just do this one.
This one without him.
Without it is fine.
So discussion.
Yep.
You've done it before, you've done this before, correct?
Um.
This is a little different.
This is a little bit different. It's a little bit different, um.
You see any, any, I don't need to be shifty, you see a quick sand in the future?
I, I do not.
Okay, all right.
I do not, it's just, it's just that the board's making the decision to waive the, the interest that the county would have gotten, but it's, they're improving the structure and, and, uh, you know, making it look, look a little bit more compact and so.
The roof was already completed, it was completed last week, the, the compliments that we've received, we've done, like I said officially, it was closed the fourteenth. In less than a week, we've managed to get the roof on, get the yard cleaned up. Um, we're potentially looking at a property across the way, um, as well to purchase in the near future, but we need to be able to get this, this structure stable before we look at something else.
Yeah, good for you.
Very good. Okay, um, yeah, we'll go ahead with holding on, so, um, any, or all, all in favor of approving the motion here, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. And then, we have, we had skipped over the wellness and safety, can we any minutes? We'll acknowledge those in the record, and we have discussion decision twenty twenty-five homestead and military disallowances.
Those are from Brandon.
Right. Do we need to get Brandon, or everyone understand what's there? They are.
They're not there, I mean.
They, they don't live there anymore.
They don't live there anymore, so I guess.
You know that because they gave you new address, or how do you know that?
I guess that'd be a question for Brandon, I, I, looking at the list, I know some people that.
Sure.
Moved or whatever.
Yeah, I question it, if they don't, if they don't let us know, do we know that they don't live there anymore?
I don't know.
I can't remember.
Do you want me to get Brandon or?
Oh, I thought we were, but.
Yeah. Why don't you?
You know, I just, I, I kinda just think it's good practice when.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they should be here.
It would be, it would be nice.
They should be here, yeah.
Hey, I mean, that lawyer for South Oak or South Dale, like, were you gonna let him know?
So, um, Doug asked me to, um, let, um, them know, so I did, I did let Luke and. And Cory know, um. I don't know, he didn't say. I'll make sure that that's for me.
Brandon's gone, so Nancy, says she's the one that did them, so she can answer any questions.
Yes, any questions?
How do you know that they don't live there anymore?
Uh, most of them, they've told us that they're, they send my stuff to somewhere else, I've moved and sent it to my house in Estorville or wherever, because most of them, their houses are for sale. Is what end up being on the case, but since they haven't signed a transfer form, we have to send a letter to notify them that we're moving it, even though they know they don't live there.
Okay.
Yeah. Fortunately, there's only a handful this year, so not too bad. Anything else?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
So, thanks Nancy.
All right, you're welcome.
Yep. Okay, uh, so we need a motion then to approve the disallowances. Seems like an octi-mor.
It does.
Okay, motion by Garmin.
Basically, we're disallowing.
Disallowing the disallowances, yeah.
Kyle, are you back?
Oh, yeah. Kyle, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Haas. Discussion further? Uh, if not, all in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I think that was nice. Yeah, nope, okay, motion carried. Okay, discussion decision, change of zoning and subdivision flat for South Oaks located in southeast quarter of section fourteen Cresco Township.
Doug, do we need to wait for the attorney to get here?
Did you?
I did reply all.
Reply all there, so Jim should, if he's available, should be coming over, we can certainly introduce the board to what is going on here.
I was gonna say, if, if we wanted to wait for the attorney, we have John Torbert here, here for an update too, so, whatever would be.
I gotta be in Mesa City at noon, but that's fine.
Are you in a hurry?
Pardon me?
Are you in a hurry?
Well, sort of.
Okay.
Go ahead, that's.
Yeah, I guess, or how long is your update?
I, probably ten minutes to fifteen minutes at the most.
Okay.
Go.
Yep, go ahead, let's, let's just do that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I'll be brief.
Nope, you're good, appreciate you being here. Where'd Amber go?
I don't know.
For those of you that don't know, I, uh, took a very bad fall at home back in May.
Oh, sorry.
Um, this is my first work trip since May.
Okay.
I, uh, managed to fall into a window well, and I broke four vertebrae in my back, and it went on my neck, and I was in the hospital for five weeks.
Oh, that sounds true.
Which is an interesting experience. Whole different world.
I am sure.
Um, and I wore a neck brace until last week. And of course, I can't drive without, with a neck brace on, because you don't have. So I've been finally freed.
Well.
And it's, uh, it's good to be back.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and this is my favorite part of my job, is talking to supervisors and talking with counties, so I really miss it, so it's good to get back out. Um, a couple of things, IDDA started years ago, we started the process where we, um, hold a summer meeting with our drainage clerks or drainage administrators. Uh, we had our third one this year, uh, back on July seventeenth, uh, very successful, we don't go in with an agenda, we just, uh, it's myself, our attorney and our lobbyists, we sit down and talk, if you all have any questions, address those, so that's been very successful. Uh, our annual meeting is coming up on December fifth, the first Friday in December, uh, in Fort Dodge. Uh, I pretty much have the agenda put together for that, and we're collecting and seeing if we need, um, any legislative requests for next year, if you all have something you'd like to see done, uh, with regards to drainage statutes, we'd be happy to take a look at that. I think the most important thing I would talk about right now is, um, we were contacted by a private attorney, um, earlier this year who was involved in a drainage case, uh, unfortunately, that they lost. And it was two counties that were not members of IDDA, but we didn't know anything about it. And they were doing a drainage improvement, a rather large drainage improvement, and they sent all their assessments out, and what, some of the assessments went to a, uh, a railroad company called Northern Railroad, which I've never heard of until now, and Northern Railroad took exception.
Was it the Iowa?
I believe. The railroad company took exception to the assessments, thought they were too excessive, they didn't wanna pay them, they went back and forth with the two counties. And the railroad eventually ended up suing the two counties, saying that they did not owe the assessments, and they based their claim that they didn't owe the assessments on some federal legislation that was passed back in the nineties that they claimed made them exempt from any kind of local assessments via drainage or anything else. The case went to district court, and the railroad won. Uh, so we are in a situation right now where that is the law. Now, with the district court decision, you can appeal that to the Iowa Supreme Court, but number one, Supreme Court has to decide to take the case. And they only take about ten to fifteen percent of the cases that they're requested to take, so it's a big deal when they take up a request to rehear a case. Call it appeal, call it rehearing, whatever you wanna do, it's a rehearing. The attorney came to us and said, you know, I petitioned for a rehearing, can you help us out? So we got our legal counsel involved, uh, joined the petition, and thank God, the Iowa Supreme Court said, yes, we will rehear the case. Uh, that rehearing is gonna be two weeks from today, in the Supreme Court chambers. In the meantime, we as an association through our legal counsel filed a front of the court brief with the court in support of the county, uh, and giving our justification as why we think the district court was in error. I think we have a decent chance of getting this overturned. Uh, I don't think the Supreme Court, if they're only rehearing ten to fifteen percent of what they receive, I don't think they rehear a case with the intent of patting the district court in the back and saying, good job. I think they see some issues in the decision that need to be further discussed and further litigated. So, two weeks from today, there'll be a, a hearing in the Supreme Court chamber, um, the attorney representing the two counties will be there, our attorney, uh, that wrote the front of the court brief will be there. And then, I would guess by the end of the year, we'll have a decision from the Iowa Supreme Court on that, hopefully, Supreme Court rules in our favor, we don't wanna have a situation going forward where railroads are exempt from danger age improvement assessments, so without all taking questions.
I just have one comment, maybe we're different here, but I don't think the railroad pays their drainage assessments here, they don't sue us, they just don't pay.
Well.
Is that abnormal, or are their counties receiving their payment?
Yes, some do. And I think some of it depends on the railroad company, I think some counties have developed relationships, and they know who to talk to, and they know who to send assessments to. Railroads are very frustrating people to work with, and it's not just drainage, it's everybody that I've talked to that has tried to work with railroads, that they are just impossible. I, I had a county, uh, in Western Iowa that sued a railroad, and they said, we had to sue them to get their attention. They, you know, we would call them, we would leave voicemails, there was never any return call, we sent emails, there was never an email returned, it was just like they didn't exist. Said, we had to sue them to get their attention, to get them to start talking to us, so it's very frustrating.
John, do you have any contacts that might help us with that?
Uh, I'd have to go back in my file, yes, I, we do have, yes.
Okay.
I, I think we, uh, particularly with your dog, whether the, through the verdict or the, we've got some, some people that used to be helpful anyway.
Okay.
This is not a railroad dump.
Yeah, that's not one we have years.
Sorry, are you, is, is it Hancock in Winnebago?
No. Worth and Cerroborro.
I'm confused about which one. Do you have, do you know that, I have an order, the one that filed the CED or whatever.
Sure. Floyd, excuse me, Floyd and Cerroborro, not Worth, Floyd and Cerroborro.
John, you probably haven't met Jennifer, Jennifer is our new drainage clerk here in.
Oh, okay.
Hello, nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Yeah, so, uh, if you call up here, you'll probably talk to Jennifer.
Very good.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you for being with us, so. Have a great rest of your day.
You too.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we will go ahead with the change of zoning and subdivision flat here, so go ahead, guys. Well, I guess, now, where did Amber show us? Oh, that's right, that's right. She said to continue on when, when that happened, so, yeah. Go ahead, guys.
All right, I'll go ahead and speak, uh, we, with an effort to train Cory, if that's all right with you, Cory.
Absolutely.
Um, this, uh, piece of property that we are talking about is looking south of Algonah, and, um, it's where a trailer port existed. If you zoom in here real close, um, we have Southdale subdivision over here to the west. And then Custom Concrete, which is Levi Cuchara, purchased a piece of property here with twenty-some acres of property, and then to the west, there is a motel, uh, some s, storage units, and Mansky, uh, Precision Drainage is located right here, this would be Highway one sixty-nine, and this is called Park Road, or I think it's two hundred.
Hundred ninety.
Hundred ninety street. Um, so what they're proposing to do with that is subdivide it into sixteen lots, one through eight would be a residential, and lots nine through sixteen would be larger for people to store or put up, uh, maintenance buildings, storage buildings, uh, those types of things, a little bit larger building. Uh, in addition to the subdivision, they are requesting that these lots here be rezoned, uh, to residential, R two. Uh, if you look at our zoning in here, the land to the west is zoned R five, which is a rural, uh, one and two, uh, family, and this is all business, uh, B two, and they are asking for rezoning, uh, lots one through eight to be R two, uh, which is a residential, and it's a little bit smaller, uh. which is a residential and it's a little bit smaller lot size requirement. So with that, there is a resolution that has been prepared by Jim Lauer. Levi's, Levi Cuchara's attorney are kind of handling this. And if the board would approve that and we move further on, Jim would be moving further on. The Planning and Zoning Board, the Planning and Zoning Commission met last night. They had held a public hearing for both the subdivision and the proposed zoning change. And they recommended approval to the board supervisors. And that meeting had a resolution approved as well. Jim, I don't know if you have anything else to say?
On this ad, for the sake of consistency, the proposed resolution essentially is identical to in 2020, there was the D and D and then Keith's subdivision. And so for the sake of consistency on the county level, it's drafted to mirror those ones in Florida.
So this will be resolution zero eight, two six, two five, zero one. And we'll need a motion to approve that resolution. Okay, Haas makes the motion.
I'll second.
Second by Wachter. Discussion further on the, on the motion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Specker?
Yeah.
Wachter?
Yes.
Nan?
Yes.
Motion carries and they get to go. We can autograph that.
And then, yeah, we do have a plat then that would need to be designed by both Carter and Tim. And if we could get that resolution signed, copy for Cory.
Do we date it too?
Please.
Today or yesterday?
Uh, today is fine. Twenty-six. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
By the way, I express my appreciation. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Tammy, there are the other paperwork and of course, I will find you.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda. Did you need some?
Yeah, I'll get that here quick. Or did you give it to Cory already?
Oh, we're on schedule.
You did?
Yeah, I gave it to Cory.
Well, I mean, we're, we're in order now, I can say. We're, are we ever on schedule? We're, we're just in order in the middle of the schedule. Okay. Discussion decision to cancel prior year drainage warrant. Says to void previous year's warrant, year warrants, two thousand nine, Kuchenbecker excavating for seventeen dollars and forty cents. And two thousand eight, Union Pacific Railroad for a thousand dollars and forty-five dollars.
This is just stuff we do every year. Get drainage warrants the prior year.
I'm not sure if I missed something while the guys were at the table there or what. But what's the reason for needing to void these?
No, we, I have, we haven't had any explanation yet, Kyle. They're, they're searching for information.
So they're, they're old.
They're very old.
They're old. I guess according to the note here, Nick sent a release letter in 2023 and we haven't had any response. So they need to be canceled because they're very old, two thousand eight and two thousand nine.
Yeah. Okay.
Were you saying that we wanted, we wanted to pay them for them? Is that what you're saying?
No, we're saying we're pretty much voiding it, correct? We're canceling them. They're not good anymore. We send them checks. Those checks have never been cashed.
I see.
Correct? Am I reading that right?
Yeah, and so we need to cancel them to clean up our books.
Okay.
We shouldn't have.
Is it seventeen years long enough?
Yeah, we shouldn't have checks on our books for that long.
I think there's something that's ran like every year, maybe that or every few years at least to try and clean up that up.
Yeah.
Did you get that, Kyle?
No, no, disconnected.
Not, not much of it. I actually just messaged Josh and asked if he could plug into my owl. If we could switch over or something because it's definitely difficult to hear out on this one.
I see. It doesn't look like it's working. The eyes are off.
Yeah. Doug, Doug, you got to leave by when?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty, okay.
What's up? We're good.
Okay.
We'll wait and see.
I'd say we'll probably just do right away and engineer quick after, after this.
After we get it finished.
After this item.
Okay, yes, yeah, that's fine.
Kyle, you want to send me an invite?
Yeah, I'm working on that, Josh.
Okay. Oh, boy. I need it.
We did every Tuesday.
I don't know about that.
Who's going to sign the paperwork?
Fair enough. I guess maybe I. If you want to get paid.
Yep, that's right.
That's what Josh is for.
Okay. Not yet.
Do I need to sign these?
Yes, that's payroll.
Payroll, that's phases.
Payroll. And then this is the. Oh, and I gotta get the minutes for you.
There, Kyle?
Yeah.
You're muted if you're talking.
Yeah, it looks like it's working. I think your camera setting is wrong blur right now. But yeah, it, I think I can hear you good.
Do you need me to?
Do you, do you need Tammy to explain that again?
Yeah, if you can hit those highlights quick, that's very.
So these are checks that were issued in two thousand eight and two thousand nine that have never been cashed. And Nick sent them a letter in 2023 and still hasn't gotten a response. So we need to clean up the book. So we need to cancel those warrants.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion to void those warrants then. I like motion. Motion by Wachter. Need a second? Second by Garmin. Discussion on, any for, on the warrants at all?
Forever, forever gone if we do this?
Those two, yep.
They can't, they can't come back.
Well, I suppose they could re-ask again, but yeah, but they're not going to be able to cash those two.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor of approving? Motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, Doug, we'll go ahead with construction right away then.
Thank you. There are no requests for construction in the road right away.
Discussion?
I've got a few things, I guess, on resurfacing projects. We are still waiting for some traffic marking to be completed. When they move in, it should be one or two days. B sixty-three and P thirty are what needs to be marked yet. The bridge north of Sexton, they are planning to pour that deck Thursday. In fact, there's a pre-pour meeting right now that is going on. Seal coat work is completed. The Iowa DOT does have construction east of Algonah. And they are using a detour P fifty-six, B forty over to Highway seventeen. The recycling bins, they have been removed from that parking lot until underground work is completed. I think the underground work is completed. Now they got to pour concrete, which they plan to have done by this Friday and then open next Tuesday. So as soon as everything is opened up, we will get the recycling bins back there. I'm working on the secondary road annual report. I pretty much have it completed. I need to proofread it, but I may put it on the agenda for next week to go over that with more supervisors. And then I had mentioned a couple of weeks ago, there was a funding grant opportunity that was asking counties for bridges. We submitted two bridges for that funding grant. There is a committee of county engineers that reviewed the applications. We did have one bridge make it through the first cut. And it is a bridge which would be located on the west line of Section twelve of Portland Township. It would be right around the corner from the Michelson Marsh Bridge. So good news, we still have one more interview to go through with the committee to ensure that it is not going to hold up any, any type of process. This is a fast-moving process. So we hope that that works. The transfer station permit, I'm just about ready to submit that this afternoon. And self-insurance, I have one more thing for the end of fiscal year, which is due the thirtieth of September. All the app, all the materials to a consultant, we're waiting for that to come back. Then we can register with the state as far as being compliant with five oh nine A rules. That's pretty much everything that I have going on in our office. Guys are out maintaining gravel roads right now. The amount of rain we've received so far in August is nowhere near what we received in July. So.
That's okay.
Things are starting to come around. However, I'm sure it's not dry. There's still quite a bit of water sitting.
Did you get my message about?
I did. I know that there was some work down there. And I got to look to, I got to run down there, Carter.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, sounds great. Anything else for Doug?
Um, Doug, I got a question. On the Michelson Marsh stuff, is there anything else for an update there as far as construction plans or any of that besides this current opportunity or where we have that bridge?
That bridge, there, we're trying to close on all that property. And it's in the federal USDA hands right now. And weekly, we are talking with them. Paul Ockus has been visiting with them as well as Mike Gabor, who is the attorney that's taking care of the closing. As soon as we get that closed, it's ready for letting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, you bet.
Safe travels.
Thanks.
Okay, we will go back then to approve adding drainage repair request procedure to drainage policy. And that is in our.
Yeah, I put it in the packet.
Packet here.
So what I found looks to me like a letter. I did ask Kyle if that's the latest policy and he thought that that was the latest policy. I did put in there an email from, that I had between Todd Holmes from January that you guys asked for that additional motion to be added. That has not been added as far as I am aware. I did not see it in that policy. So that will have to be added as well. Kyle, do you know, is this something that Todd does? Is this, who update, who updates this policy? Do you know?
I think we just had a conversation about it in the boardroom before and kind of just added the word Dr. General Direction and kind of a plan that way. So I don't think we had any legal counsel involved with this previously. Yeah.
Is it possible, and maybe I'm overstepping here, please tell me if I am, to make it look more like a policy than just a letter? Because if I would have come across this regularly, I wouldn't have thought it was a policy. I would have thought it was just information distributed. So is there a way we can make it look more like a policy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we definitely could. I think that's all that's the conversation. I think, I mean, yeah, I think the big thing we had talked about at that time was outlining, like, there were big things we had talked about, of course, scale tickets being required to be submitted for engineering projects. That was, that was pretty substantial for a conversation at the time. Actually, that's a spot in the bottom about connect, connecting to district facilities, wide fittings for waterfall capacity and televising ability. Some of the issues that we ran into when we televised different county tiles could have potentially been avoided with different fittings or clearing construction or pieces of a tile that is falling into the facilities. And then we also talked about GPS coordinates for anything over fifteen thousand. Howard brought that up about maybe we just require that for any invoice or any bill to get paid. But yeah, I guess that's all open for conversation as far as I'm concerned. But yeah, if we have a different format, we could put it into or whatever, that would be fine. I think this was kind of more of a letter format so that we could send it out to contractors and engineers that would regularly reuse so that they could all be informed that way. But yeah, whatever, whatever works is fine.
So, are we discussing?
Go ahead, yeah.
So Kyle, the, in this letter or previous policy or that's dated March twenty-sixth to twenty-four, when a landowner has a repair request, the landowner shall contact the drainage clerk at the auditor's office. It's not real specific as to how the landowner shall contact. But I, I do like the idea of, of there being contact made directly with the auditor's office instead of people calling the individual supervisors. And then just, what do you think about, and what's the implication there that's already there? Is it, is the implication contact any kind or do we want to narrow that down to in-person?
I think so. Personally, I would.
I mean, yeah, that is kind of right, the way it's written right now. And I don't have an issue clarifying that. The reality is, I mean, there's times when a landowner called. The reality is, I mean, there's times when a landowner called a contractor that they have washout in their field, and they dig it up, but they don't know if it's county or private, and we may not know that ahead of time. So there are situations where the actual work may be done before it's even called in, whether that's to the auditor's office or the supervisor, um, I guess. I don't know that there's been any substantial issues with helping supervisor. I do know, like, this last month, I had someone phone and say, don't vote that I filled out a request for this, and I didn't do that. And I looked up the, the request that they were told they filled out wasn't actually what they had filled out, because there was just a little bit of, um, misunderstanding in what was filled out. But I don't think there's ever been any claims of somebody naming on something that they didn't actually know about. I think the one in particular that I was talking about, that individual filled out one request this year, one request last year, and it was in the same district as another request, but that was in Drain eighty, so Drain eighty's pretty substantial, and his requests were very specific for double washout, and somebody else had requested cleaning and ditch, but the, whether it was the person that was asking the questions or however it got misinterpreted, um, there was a little bit of misunderstanding there, but when I had called him back, he, he didn't have any concerns. The requests that were filled out for him were the ones that he had filled out.
Yeah, I, I think just having them, for that same, um, example, having them sign it, be there in person and sign it, is very important for that exact example right there, so that if there is questions later on, you can say, you know, yep, this is what you signed. You know, this has your signature on it. You know, I think that's important.
And if I can input anything here, the three, um, repair requests that I have for, for this meeting, um, two of the landowners actually called in, and I said, asked them if they could, you know, come in, and that way we got, uh, exact, uh, what they were referring to and what they needed fixed, and none of them had a problem of coming in and signing.
I, I think that we, you know, we've gotten away from the way we used to do it, and, you know, we always had something to fall back on because those landowners, you know, they remember coming in and signing those requests, and it was done. And, you know, a, after it's all said and done, it's the landowners who pay for it. So I do think that they need to come in, and I think they need to show exactly on the map where that repair is. You know, tell you it's marked with a flag, tell you it's marked with a stick, tell you the things that you can put on that repair request to make it easier. And then it's up to the supervisor after getting the request to reach out to them and, you know, take care of that request. I have filled out some request forms, but only because that landowner sent me exact, an exact map with an X and told me exactly what to put on it. So, you know, I felt comfortable doing that, but I, I think the landowners should come in. They know their land better than me.
I didn't get any pushback from these guys having to come in and sign them.
We, we didn't, we might have, you know, spent a lot of years ago, gotten a little bit, but they always came in and signed because they wanted it fixed, they wanted it done right. And I think that's a good process to follow. I really do.
I'm, I'm not opposed to that being a process. I guess if that's what the board desires, but I do think the, the most pushback that's going to come is from the individuals that are farther away from the courthouse on a geographical basis around the north end of the county, which is where a lot of these drainage issues are. So I just hope that's remembered and understood because if somebody calls in, that they're going through their field, and there's a hole, and they're in the middle of fieldwork in the spring or fall, they're probably not going to be real excited to try to tell them that they filled out and pay for the big fix. But if that's, if that's what we want, then that'll be the plan moving forward.
Well, and I think there can be exceptions made if, you know, we can do the request, and if it has to be on the board agenda for Tuesday. But as long as they come in when they can and sign it, I mean, doesn't mean they have to necessarily sign it before it's approved that Tuesday, but if they come in and sign it.
Needs to be signed before the Tuesday.
Yeah, I mean, if they come in, it needs to be signed before the Tuesday.
Well, and one of the gentlemen I spoke with yesterday, he does live up in, he does live up in northern Cassouche County, and he just said, okay, well, I know it needs to be fixed, I'll be in there later this week to get it signed. So he didn't have a problem with it. Now granted, that's just one, but he didn't seem to have a problem with having to come in and fill out a repair request.
We didn't have that much pushback when we did it before. We might have had the occasional grumpy person, but they came in and they signed it. If that's a policy, they know that's a policy. They will, they will come in and sign.
Well, I, I've got a, my last repair request here was for Tony Sink, and I had put his name and phone number. And, but I mean, I'm sure if I said, no, I can't do that for you, you need to go in and sign, and they're in Algonah every day, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm sure you'd be.
Yeah, because is there anything on the map?
No.
There's nothing on it?
No, no, there's not.
Well, that's the purpose of that map up there, so that it can get acknowledged, and when there's reclassifications that need to be followed, that's followed.
Well, there's nothing on this map because this particular, I mean, we always draw maps, but this, we're trying to find this tile, so it's not really a, here's where to repair something.
Well, yeah, but it's not in the whole section you're trying to find it.
And, I guess from a location perspective, I think that's where we need GPS coordinates of the actual repair coming in, and I think there's maybe as important, if not more important, than the drawing on a piece of paper for a repair request, because that's actual exact location with pictures associated usually if they get put in. So.
That's after the fact, yeah.
I guess, I think that's something we should probably be requiring for all of our repairs, because that's, that's where the actual, the road is, what physically was on mountain field.
I'll, I'll, that's after the fact today, but if, if you start doing that, and I haven't noticed we can go down that road because it's, what's on the agenda, I don't, I don't know what we can do. It's after the fact today, but assuming GPS isn't going to change, and I don't know that, twenty years ago, thirty years ago, we wouldn't. But it'll help you find, you know, twenty years from now, if, if everybody's, I, and I, I have no idea what the process is to, and how difficult it is for it to record these plots, I don't, I don't have a clue. But it would.
It's not one.
It, it, it can only be good in the future, if you might, but, again, we may not be able to down that road today, I don't know.
Well, and maybe that's something where we say, starting January first of twenty twenty-six, we're going to implement this and, and repairs from that point on. That way you get the ones that are currently in, to taken care of, and we do our best between now and then, but maybe we start a new calendar year or something. I don't know, take a point in time.
With the, with the GPS, or what are you talking about?
Yeah, for, for GPS, pardon me.
I think what is on there is for the drainage repair request procedure, so we probably should stick to that, but no doubt we need to go over, you know, other things. But I think, you know, we have a new drainage clerk, I think, for her to have a process to follow, especially with that right now and fieldwork. And, you know, it's, it's going to be happening pretty soon, um, that we have something in place, because that's when all these issues are going to pop up. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, can we do something simple change, like just when, when a landowner has a repair request, the landowner shall contact the drainage clerk in person at the auditor's office? Can it be something as simple as that, or does it need to be?
I would add that the repair request be signed prior to approval in the Tuesday morning meetings. Well.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
Or the landowner shall contact the drainage clerk at the auditor's office and, and sign. Is that, it's kind of vague to the timeline.
You could, you could add that the landowner shall sign the repair request. Some tell they something of that nature, because that's showing that they're taking materials and applying on these vehicles.
They just, they need to come to the auditor's office and sign a drainage repair request.
Instead of contact, you could say landowner shall come into the auditor's office and fill out a request with the drainage clerk, however you want to word that.
Yeah. Drainage repair request that we handle in person by the landowner or the tenant. A tenant can come in, but then they need to put the landowner's name and number on there.
And their name.
Yeah, and their name and number on that repair request so that there's.
Accountability.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, and I, I guess I don't know what you guys think about it, but that does kind of change what I said. I think the last time we talked about this is anybody can legally go out with a repair request. It was up to the trustee to verify that and handle it. So someone driving down the road could see something and turn it in as a request. It's not just the owners and tenants that would have the ability, but it doesn't need to be verified and handled by the trustee. And that was legal, I think, right?
I think we've had one where a secondary road worker turned it in here recently too, so at least you know who it is, but I don't.
And the landowner's still contacted when secondary road workers visit?
Is that the only portion that we're adding today?
Well, we have to add the scale tickets and the information from January.
The other two things from earlier this year.
Yeah, so I don't think we need to approve anything today. We can rework this and put it on the agenda
Yep.
for next week to approve the policy, kind of reformat it a little bit.
That'd be fine.
Anything else?
Anything else for this, Douglas? For today?
We can't, we can't get into different issues because it's not on the agenda, is that right? We're, we're concentrating strictly on how to handle the drainage repair.
Right.
Correct.
Are you on about the policy?
Well, whether it's the GPS end of it or the dollar amount end of it or the.
Yeah, because I do have.
We should probably have a general drainage policy discussion to open all the other things up.
So for now, we're talking about the.
The drainage repair request.
Yeah.
I mean, going forward, do we want her to ask to continue doing what she's doing and ask them to come in and sign their repair request?
I've been doing that and haven't had a pushback.
That's what she is, they're doing, so.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Yep, if you got issues, just we'll address them, but yeah, that'd be fine.
Yeah, and, and next weekend I put it on the agenda, I can just put drainage policy so we can add more things if you need to.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll go ahead with drainage repair requests.
All right.
All right, I'm a big winner today.
You are.
Go ahead, Amber, whenever you're ready.
All right, yeah, I was just kind of, um, this is repair request number sixty-five, Drainage District eighty-six, Maine. Section eighteen of Buffalo Township in the northwest of the northwest. Um, ten yards south of Black Top of Type three twenty-first street, there's a tile hole that needs to be repaired. And it is marked on the map there, and, um, I will contact him to see what we can do.
Okay. I have, uh, request number sixty-six in DD forty, lat one. Uh, this, this is a, one of the laterals in Whittamore coming off the main. Put in a request by Michael Zimmerman. Uh, water is not draining overnight and not sewer water, and no one lives two blocks away from a manhole. Yeah, and this was going on, was this last week, twentieth day of August, yeah, yeah, and they were getting a lot of backup over there. That issue's been taken care of. At least at the moment, so. And then, uh, number sixty-seven is in Wesley thirty-one by Randy Waltman. It's a large hole in the cornfield along the fence line by the road, twenty-two inch tile. It is flagged, or stake in the ditch with pink flag, but the hole's in the cornfield, and corn is gone where the hole is, false.
What train is that in?
This is in Drain eighty-four. On the main. Okay, I need a motion for supervisors to handle the request.
So.
Motion by Wacter. Your second?
Yes.
Second by Hawes. Any discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Discussion with the county auditor.
Okay.
You can mark this one as complete.
Okay.
Oh, I guess I need this yellow.
I was saying, I think you need one of these, don't you?
Yep. Is that?
Okay, so next week, believe it or not, September.
Yeah.
Um, so we have.
I will, yep, yep.
Um, I don't think so.
So your thing, all right, y'all have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At eight fifteen, we have discussion on the solar ordinance. At, uh, nine o'clock, we have the bid letting for Idells. Um, we need to approve administer to sign new opioid settlements with Todd. And we have some handwritten claims. So far, that's all we have for next week. Let's see. Then I need to talk. We got an email from Reitzels about the final payment for the land you guys went up and looked at Goraskowskis, um, wanting to know where that stood. Are we still holding that retainer? Where are we with that?
Well, I, I guess I don't know if we necessarily discussed that, but I would assume we're holding it until they come to an agreement that everything's good.
And that's what I was wondering, has that been done? Did they go up and fix it?
I don't know, because they weren't going to start until a week.
Well, it wasn't a two weeks ago we were up there, and then, so they weren't, and they weren't going to start that week, and then another week, so I'd say at best, they're doing it right now.
Kyle?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard any status update as far as the actual work being completed, but yeah, I was under the understanding we weren't going to have that conversation until the work was complete. So I haven't gotten a call from Reitzels or Goraskowskis with any updates on any work being done, so I'm not aware of anything further than that, but yeah, I think we were going to have that conversation after the work was done and completed.
Okay, well, Reitzel's the one asking us about the payment, so I, I don't know. They maybe need to be informed that we won't have that discussion till that work is done.
Who's going to do that?
I mean.
I mean, I guess I can let them know that. We'll just reply to that email and let him know that, that work needs to be done, or that there needs to be communication on where we are with that.
I, I don't have contact information for the. I, I don't have contact information for the Goruskowskis, but I have tabs. I mean, I could always, you know, reach out to him and ask him where they're at. But Kyle, I know that's your district, so I don't want to do something that, you know, you were going to handle.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, I can, I can reach out to both parties. I do have contact info of both directions, obviously. I know when we were in the field, um, Dustin had asked me to come up and do a final walkthrough with them once things were completed. And, um, I guess I kind of figured that I would be contacted once stuff was ready to, um, be viewed and be completed. And once it was completed in that nature, but I can check, check in with both of them and see what the status is.
Okay, please, that would be helpful. I don't want Reitzels to have.
Might informally ask them what each of their expectations are too. It's gonna, undoubtedly, Reitzels want some, some, uh, consideration. And I don't know how, I don't know how readily Goruskowskis are going to want to give in or whatever.
Concede, yeah.
Concede, thank you. But.
Okay. And then the other thing that I have is, we talked about this last week, the memorandum of understanding. That Hancock County is asking us if we want to sign for drainage. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to think about it or look into it, or if you want to put this on hold, or where, what direction you want me to go with this.
Certainly wouldn't be in favor of signing with Hancock before we end Humble. But if, if that's where we're going to end up, I mean, I don't see any point in delaying. And we should, we sure should, we should have asked the gentleman that was here.
I know, I thought about that after we walked out of the room. I think. People were wanting to get things moving in.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that. Was somebody going to ask the Avenue District Association if, if something they supported or?
Yeah, we were going to try and get, well, because we had, back initially when Humboldt had approached us, I think. Kyle and I, maybe you remember better, Kyle, didn't we call John Torbert and John didn't know anything about it?
Yep, I'd be correct.
Yeah, and so we were going to try and reach out. They had gotten that information from IDVA's attorney, not from John or the association itself is how I understood it. So, um, we were just going to try and investigate a little deeper into that, I guess.
Yeah, I guess you put it on hold for now.
Okay, on hold, I will put it. Okay, um. And that's all I have. Except for thank you everybody for this morning and for Kyle and Amber for your help with everything. I really, really, really appreciate it, so thank you.
Well, I did.
It is, it is.
Yeah.
It's okay to go through it and we kind of figured out the process and.
Yeah.
Feel better about the situation.
Yeah.
No?
So that's all I have.
And thank you for your.
Howard?
Nothing.
Nothing. Amber?
Uh, I was, I had an early childhood meeting yesterday and I was not able to attend. I was hoping to get an update so I could at least update you on that. I didn't have time to reach out to her, so I'll probably do that next week.
No worries. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Kyle, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, a couple things here. I have meetings for CAJDC tomorrow. Um, also had ISAC this last week. Um, there was quite a bit of discussion. There was also, well, there's many topics of ISAC inside and, inside sessions and outside sessions. But, um, specifically, there was a CO2 pipeline update meeting. In that conversation, we talked about the status of Shelby and Story Counties, um, Supreme Court appeal. That has been in the news that they are appealing to the Supreme Court. So there are some things with that that we should probably talk about as a board in closed session. So I'm obviously not going to go into those details here, but that, there was significant conversation about that. Um, situation down there. There's also stuff with Saragordo County in the docket of range of power for solar with the Utilities Commission. And basically, what that comes down to is the range of power of the company. Is trying to go to the Utilities Commission. And if they get, basically, if they get authority from the state Utilities Commission to. Override or supersede or go around the local zoning ordinance that Saragordo had put in effect. That would have potential statewide implications from a, um, precedent standards. So that was heavily discussed as well. Um. For the actual agenda of, um, our supervisory affiliate. There was some good stuff on there, but I don't know if anybody has any questions or not, I guess. There, I guess one other thing I could highlight, um, with the legislative proposal. There, there was some discussion about. TIF and how that has been used. And there, there was some language that actually someone else had brought up to me after the conversation about the legislative package. That the way it was written with ISAC package was supporting resetting the base value if you updated any projects. And the basis behind that was for projects that are TIF districts that cities have had for decades upon decades upon decades. That have just kind of spanned the length of time. Um, they have been grandfathered in under old legislation and, or basically left alone with legislation. But one of the things that I talked with our lobbyist about that would impact us is. If hypothetically, we get five years down the road with the TIF projects that we have and the list of projects we have as far as road and bridge projects, et cetera. If we have some of those projects that will be completed and funded by state funds, um, federal funds, farm-to-market funds, all those other. Or local funds, all those other sources of money. Um. That would mean that we would, or even for a lack of better terms, the costs. If the costs continue to go up and we need to update the plan to have a higher dollar threshold on individual projects. If the state legislature made changes and said that that reset your base value, then it would basically be cutting the legs out from underneath. Our plans for the TIF. So I talked with our lobbyist about that so that he understood how that would impact us. And he understands that, that that's definitely not the intent or not something that they would support. But he appreciated the situation being raised to him, so, um, I guess just.
That's a terrifying.
I don't. It, it is, I mean, it's, it's a, I guess it's the nature of the beast with the legislature that could make changes on anything. But, um, the reality is if that was a change, you just wouldn't update your plan and you wouldn't be able to add new projects to it. Until you had the other stuff paid off, which isn't a good option either. But it was mostly brought to me as a potential concern of what was in our own policy statements. So it's not to say that the legislature is trying to do that. It's making sure the language in our own direction for the association is clear and understanding the impacts there. So it's a internal document for that aspect, not something that the legislature is suggesting. But, and like I said, I explained our situation and how that would impact us. And that was well received, I would say. Um. Otherwise, yeah, we talked about quite a few things, but I don't know if anyone has any questions on that or not. But it would have, was a good conference to attend, I would say.
Very good.
Josh? Uh, yeah, we had our E nine-one-one meeting, um, last week. Uh, kind of got an update on the paging outage. There was an issue with the construction out here. Um, they had cut a communications line to a tower and, uh, that's since been repaired. And that ended up causing an outage with the paging. But because of the e-dispatch and things like that, um, the response times were still, uh, pretty good. Went over discussing using some of the, uh, fund balance from E nine-one-one to, um, set up a repeater for the, uh, school, uh, public school system. They have hired a resource officer and they're working on getting radio communications for that officer inside the school. Because right now the communications are, um, pretty limited. So they're working on getting some, um, projects kind of put together and get some numbers and things like that to get that going. Um, discussed update on the signed projects. That's all been kind of going, a lot of, a lot of signs, um, handed out to all the, the cities and stuff like that for nine-one-one. For, uh, being able to identify roads and, and things like that. They're doing a house number project right now to, um, kind of find all those house numbers that are either missing or not readable. They, they're working to try to push people to either get their house numbers more visible or replace their house numbers. Uh, they just discussed doing mailers that had just like the stickers that have the numbers on them so they can send those out to the individuals. So that way they can at least provide something for them to put on their house for, that way especially at nighttime, um, for, you know, for visibility. The ambulance or, or, you know, any first responders need to get to an address, they're able to see the addresses. Um, they said that they've visited over ninety-five hundred different address points around the county, so. Um.
Twelve or fifteen hundred of them don't have numbers?
I can't remember what the.
Something like that.
Yeah, I think you're right. The biggest, biggest topic was legislation with the, the, uh, nine-one-one budgets, the funding. They're, they're talking about pulling back, um, funding, uh, some things to pass. I'm not a hundred percent sure if they, if it's completely gone through. But what they're looking at is they're going to pull back, um, and they created a whole spreadsheet of all the different counties. What the counties are, are going to be, you know, the funding going to be transferred down to the state. And it looks like, uh, by the end of twenty-twenty-six, the state could be pulling back, um, almost thirty-six thousand dollars. Of our E nine-one-one funding, um, down to the state for, for their expense and their projects and things. So that's a, that's a pretty big. And that, when you got projects that are, you know, for radios and things like that, the radios are expensive. Uh, considering a new, new radio, uh, for, you know, police, sheriff, fire, you know, can cost upwards of twelve hundred dollars. To get program installed and everything, that's, you know, you pull thirty-six thousand from the budget, that can affect quite a bit of things. They're working on a tough luck project. They've got, uh, ten that have arrived, they're working on getting those set up and installed in the, in the, uh, cars, patrol cars. Working on the e-dispatch, uh, software and shieldware. They're looking at getting some, uh, computers and TVs for like the fire departments. So that way they can have up on the screen. So e-dispatch and, uh, um, I think it, the shieldware and e-dispatch. What it is, is you get an app on your phone and once you get paged out, you're going to respond on that app saying that you're responding. Well, the e-dispatch in each of the fire departments can tell, uh, who's responding to the fire department. Or if there's people responding to the scene. So they know, they either wait for, you know, this last person to get there or grab their gear and meet them at the scene kind of thing. So they're working on getting some computers and, and TVs kind of set up for that. And it's some of the reports from the, uh, fire departments is it's been very helpful, um, to know who's responding and know. Know if they need to just grab someone's gear and meet them at the, at the scene with it, so that's been pretty good. They did discuss, it's called Rapid SOS. It's a, um, system on your phone that you can actually put your, like your health information. So like if you have allergies and things like that, that you can put that, store that in your phone. So when you call or text nine-one-one, it transfers that information to the, the dispatch. So that way dispatch can pass that information along to like, uh, ambulance crew that's, you know, responding. So like if you've got allergy to penicillin or something, you know, when they get there on, on scene, they can just give you penicillin or, you know. Just for example, but. So that's, that's kind of a cool project that, that's going on right now. And I think other than that, I did bring up our, uh, solar ordinances, uh, requested by Maria. That, that we discussed that with the different commissions. No one really had any issues with anything that's on there. They didn't think, uh, anything with the ordinance would, would affect E nine-one, so. Okay, that was about it.
Okay. Well, I've got a few things here. I've got, I had Board of Health last Wednesday. For, I think we had six or seven of us there. We did not have an environmental health update, emergency preparedness update. Kendra Copan, she's been doing events at the nursing homes. And they also had a hazmat event. Somebody up in Valero got doused with hazardous substances and, and, um, the, they brought him down to the parking lot. At the hospital and the fire department came and hosed him down. And, and I guess in their, to, all fire departments, you know, have some hazmat training to, to do that. But, um, so they're working on coming up with some ideas and where the proper place would be, or finding a proper place to do that. Because that's fine now that they can do that in the parking lot, but then when it's February and twenty below, that doesn't really work. So when that happens, what drain do you want that stuff going down in? And, um, so they're.
How did they get him there? Like transfer him by ambulance or?
Uh.
Personal car or?
I guess I don't know.
No.
I don't know.
I'm going to say I'm pretty sure we're a lot less on which drains going down and getting it off first.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, but either way, so they had, they did have an incident and, uh, the, the hospital started being able to take care of stuff like that with the fire department. Because they do not have a, a hazmat bay, bay anymore, um, out of the hospital. So the fire department has to work with them on, on doing that cleanup. Uh, for immunization update, Lindsay Blath had that. Um, there's been an increase in exemptions this year, especially with going back to school. Um, the state has passed some legislation that's required them to post that they offer exemptions, whether religious or other, um, for immunizations. Um, and they're seeing an increase in families. And their question was asked, was there, are they picking and choosing? Or are they just saying no or, and they're saying they're seeing a lot more parents just saying no to everything rather than, well, I want this one and not this one and want this one and not this one. So it's just, uh, um, but they, they did one thousand seven hundred and forty immunizations. they did one thousand seven hundred and forty immunizations, um, in the past year for for children, um, in their children's program, so. Um, but the state requires them to post that, yeah, on all their social media and, and, uh, that's been a big topic of conversation in the past year. As far as the state grant, uh, Lindsay talked, they're pursuing a USDA grant for providing more natural food options in small communities, um. Yeah, other than that, that was about the extent of that meeting. I have last, excuse me, I have last Care Connections Zoom this afternoon to pay claims and then, and we'll be done. Um, and then I also have an RTM with FEMA at three o'clock today. This is to go through some of the closeout stuff from my three little projects from last year and, uh, finalize things there so we can get the, get the money.
We have gotten some money from that.
From that, yeah, yeah, and the state had already approved it and, yeah, it was, this was just finishing things out. Um, then I had, uh, I sent you all an email or forwarded an email with, uh, Nate, uh, with the landowner situation here that I brought up in the boardroom last week. Did you all get that email? I just forwarded it.
Oh, just.
Just a minute ago. And, 'cause there was a question on whether he could pattern tile this and run everything, um, from the southeast corner of the farm, and he talked to an engineer and said that, um, he should be allowed to, to do that, um, for, at first glance, but need to get some more information. Um, the neighboring landowner would prefer him to hook into three different outlets that he already has, um, but they are wanting to push everything east, that would make the most, or be easiest for them, um, so. Either way, I'm updating you on that and you can look at what, what the engineer said there. Um, and then as far as the Whitmore tile goes, that, the crew was there last week and they did what they could. They, it's flowing at seventy-five percent now versus seven, you know, it was a while back, so. Um, so that's significant improvement and they, they have to wait till the water goes down as a whole to televise it and um, they were blind cutting with, I think they call it their hog, um, cutter that goes through there and, and just trying to to get through and they're gonna come back and do some more fine tuning of the cleanup work and, and then te- televise it here when things dry up. But it is flowing and flowing well and, and the city guys were happy there, so. Uh, PAK one, we got the permit back from the Army Corps finally, so, uh, Tammy and I are signing that and scanning that back to Colin and we can move forward with, um, getting bids and doing the work. Um, Colin did say if there's some emergency spots or stuff that needs attention soon, that's okay to go ahead and do that and we can include that in the, in the work, um, if needed, but. Uh, oh, and for the solar topic, did either of you see the, um, it was the Secretary of State or, or Secretary of, no, sorry, not Secretary of State, um, Secretary of Ag and then Trump's statements also as far as federally funding of solar. 'Cause that's the large, by and large, they're funded a lot by subsidies and, um, and I, this was from Secretary Brooke Rollins. Says, "Big news for American farmers. I just announced that effective immediately, American farmland will no longer use taxpayer dollars to build solar farms. Um, starting today, USDA will no longer deploy programs to fund solar or wind projects on productive farmland, ending massive taxpayer handouts, also ending the use of panels made by foreign adversaries like China, which is where most of the panels come from." Um, so just something to watch. And then Trump released a statement that any state that's been, that has built and relied on windmills and solar for power are seeing record-breaking increases in electricity and energy costs, the scam of the century. We will not approve wind or farmer-destroying solar. Um, so just know that that's coming out from the federal government. I don't know how that's gonna affect things, just interesting to watch that conversation, so.
Can change with the breeze.
I can change tomorrow.
Or change for two years.
I'm just, I'm just letting you know that in our solar discussions, it was, it's interesting to watch that. Um, for Morris stood up in public discussion, he wanted some information on the litigation on Drain four lat two. What can we give him as far as, I know he's requested stuff before.
I think you can give him anything except for communication between me and the attorney, but otherwise.
Okay, but I mean, I don't have
I think.
anything other than sending him to your office, I guess.
And I've given him copies of the.
Right.
The papers, so I, I think he's looking for information from you guys as far as where it's at, how long is it gonna take? I mean, I think that's the information. He's looking for stuff that we probably don't have the answer for, but I think that's what he's looking for.
Yeah. Right.
Status, current status.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, Tammy, and I think that's the unfortunate reality is those closed session conversations and confidential attorney-client conversations, we can't share at this point, and I think, I think that is most of what he's looking for, but I don't think we can share it right now. As much as I would love to, I just don't think we can.
Well, a lot of it is up in the air too. I don't think we know, you know, how long it's gonna take or.
I think the most we can say is a decision is often made yet.
I don't know if we could get copies of like everything that has been filed with the court in those cases, because those would be, I don't know exactly the point of when that becomes a public record, but at least those would be viewed by, um, both parties, so I think I have no concern sharing things that have been publicly filed that way, but I don't know that that really answers the questions he's looking for.
No, and I've given him the original stuff. I haven't given him, you know, any of that kind of stuff, but I don't think that's what he's looking for. I think he's looking for.
I'm sure he, I mean, I'm sure he's looking, this is, this is God, it's costing me money, I'm tired of it, what's, what's gonna happen?
Yeah, right. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Without answerable, or, I mean, you just, I, I know what he wants. He wants to put a stake in the sand and stop it.
Uh-huh.
And that's what he's told me on the phone too, yeah.
Yeah, and he's, he's told me the same thing. I just, I don't know what our options are. I mean, we're defending lawsuits that are coming against the Brange District. I, I don't, I don't think we have a way to draw a line in the sand and say we're gonna stop, stop the builds here when we have a case to defend. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, that's all I have, so.
Tammy, can I ask a quick question? Are we gonna put it on the agenda to approve the payroll change?
Yes, so we, we're still in that process. We haven't, um, I haven't met with the department heads yet, 'cause I'm still talking to Anne about getting all that information, so. Um, I was trying to make contact with her yesterday, but we played phone tag, so, um, we have a copy that she, a resolution, a sample resolution that they had used in another county. Um, but I'm looking for more information from her than just that, so I'm hoping to touch base with her by phone and we just haven't been able to make contact, so.
Okay, just so the sooner the better, to let people know that there may be a change and.
It's in the process.
Will be a change.
Yeah, it's in process.
What that change will look like.
Yeah.
It's in process. We just haven't been able to make real strides, I think, and that's okay.
Well, if nothing else, need a motion to adjourn. Motion by my actor. Second by Garmin. Discussion on adjournment. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. We are adjourned at eleven nineteen.